Oh, here, you did, I've got, I was gonna-
Have you say it's something for someone from the public council?
Oh, just put it over there, that's fine.
Oh, we ran out of agendas, is there anyone who could pick up on two?
I'll put two back.
Being six thirty, I will call our meeting to order, can everybody hear me in the back of the room? Okay, this is the May twenty eighth Board of Selectmen meeting, and would you join me in the President's Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, our agenda for tonight, we're gonna try and keep it on time, it's about a two hour, well, our agenda's at eight oh five. First, we have vacancies, open forum, request to approve minutes. At six thirty-five, a public hearing for site plan review for the high school athletic fields improvements, Chris Huntress and Huntress Associates. Six forty-five, garden club request to re-landscaped the rotary. Six fifty, request appoint Gibbs Mitchell as the registrar of voters. Six fifty-five, which may be delayed until Jen Kirkland can get here, she's at a sporting activity right now. But it's a discussion and vote to relocate the Fourth of July block party. Seven oh five, school committee member request to consider members for the charter review committee. Seven ten, discussion to, discussion and or vote to amend the Council on Aging Classification Plan and Job Description from our Assistant Town Manager. Seven twenty, discussion to provide animal control services to Grafton and to amend the classification plan. Seven thirty, discussion and vote on Spur House Sales Advisory Committee's scope of work. Seven forty, schedule review of Board of Selectmen and Town Manager Goals and Retreat Review. Seven fifty, Smith valve parking plan. Eight o'clock, interdepartmental transfers from the town manager. Seven oh five, town manager's report, which is followed usually by our issues and correspondence of the Selectmen, and then we'll be talking about next end or agenda items, and we will have an executive session this evening. So, Mr. Johnson, would you announce our vacancies?
I'd be happy to.
Oh, excuse me, open forum, no, vacancies and then open forum.
Okay, vacancies, Conservation Commission, two non-voting associates. Country Club Operating Committee, one non-voting associate. Green Technology Advisory Group, unlimited membership, anybody can join. The more the merrier there. Historical Commission, one member and two non-voting associate vacancies. Housing Partnership Committee, one member. Recreation Commission, one non-voting associate. Sandra Pond slash Conservation Area Wardens, two members. Senior and Disabled Taxation Aid Committee, two members. Westboro Housing Authority, two members. Interim appointments until the March two thousand nineteen town election. And the Westboro Spirit Committee, seven members.
Okay, for open forum, we have some town employees who'd like to speak. Is there anyone from the regular audience who'd like to speak before them? Anyone for open forum, a resident? Okay, Chief Lori.
Well, I can tell you it's been an exciting first few months over at the Police Department, being able to make promotions. And now I come before you today to introduce our two newest hires. So, we are currently up to our full complement of twenty-nine. Obviously, they're very needed because we're lacking staff in certain areas. So, very pleased to introduce you first to Officer Darryl Jones. Officer Darryl Jones resides in Shrewsbury with his wife Nancy, who's here today, and their two children, Maya, age nine, and Darryl Junior, age eight. He holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. He was employed by the University of Massachusetts for twenty-two years. Two as a police dispatcher, twelve as a patrolman and detective. He was promoted to sergeant in two thousand ten, detective patrol sergeant, detective and patrol sergeant since two thousand twelve. He has extensive training, and he's also a member of the FBI Leader Group, which is the Law Enforcement Executive Development Association. So, he is a very welcomed addition, highly trained, motivated officer, is gonna fit in very well. Very honored to introduce him to you today. Our second is Officer William Kearney. Officer William Kearney, he grew up in the neighboring town of Northborough, the son of Bill and Bridget. He has an older sister, Erin. Growing up, he was inspired by the work of his grandfather did with the Boston Police Department, as well as his aunt with the State Police, and uncles with the Wareham and MBTA Police Departments. Comes from a long lineage of law enforcement family. He's a graduate of the Plymouth Police Academy, part of the sixty-first ROC. He was a self-sponsored candidate by the town of Northborough, which shows his initiative to get into this career. And prior to taking employment with us, he worked also at UMass Medical School from June two thousand sixteen till April two thousand eighteen. Again, both welcome additions to the department, I wanted to introduce them to you into the community. You'll see them out there, working, they're currently in the Field Training Officer Program. We feel that due to their experience, this will be a shortened program, so we can get them onto their shift assignments and then other assignments, we have detective that's still in patrol that will take his on to assignments. So, these are very exciting times, and I'm very proud to have them with us here today, and our clerk is going to, I swear them in.
Thank you, congratulations to the both of you.
Please raise your right hand, I state your name.
I, William Kearney.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
As a duly appointed police officer patrolman.
As a duly appointed police officer patrolman.
To serve the town of Westborough.
To serve the town of Westborough.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And to faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
Perform my duties so help me God.
Perform my duties so help me God.
Thank you, thank you. I think Chief Purcell also wanted to speak.
Good evening, Patrick Purcell, you are Westboro Fire Chief. One month ago, I was in front of you, the Board of Selectmen and Town Manager, Assistant Town Manager, looking, seeking your support for the SAFER grant to hire eight firefighters, for which you supported that mission, and I am thankful for the letter that you wrote that was uploaded actually into the grant, so that was submitted as part of the two point two-ish million dollar packet. That night, when I explained the process to you, I told you that we would probably not be ready to go for about a year. And since then, and that is typical for any FEMA grant, but in this occasion, because this is a two thousand and seventeen grant, we were recently notified that should we receive the award, we're actually in it next month.
Wow.
We'll know by the end of, end of June, maybe the first week in July. So, we'll have an answer either way by then. And then I just wanted to let you know, in lieu of this information, because it is time-consuming to go through a process to hire people, and there is a performance period that we have to utilize, which is a hundred and eighty days, we're gonna go ahead and advertise our positions and establish a list now, so we have a list ready to go if we get the award, which, if we don't get the award, we'll probably end up hiring in two thousand, in that fiscal period anyway, the next fiscal period. We have two people that have alluded to the fact they may retire, so looks like we'll have at least two openings anyways, so with a potential of to ten. So, just so you know, if you see us advertising, that's really the purpose of me being here, and to tell you that it's been sped up. If you see us advertising, that's why.
Great, great job.
Thanks for the update.
Thank you. And then Selectmen Marshall has two announcements.
I do, so the first announcement, these, you want me to do these now?
No, you're doing both.
Oh, yeah, okay. So, the first announcement is to announce the Westboro Civic Club's Eleventh Annual Fishing Challenge. Lovely poster by the Civic Club. That's on Saturday, May twelfth, that's this Saturday at Minuteman Park, from nine AM to one PM. So, go out, catch a big fish, and don't tell any tall tales.
It's a big family event, it's really nice.
It is.
You don't have to bring your own equipment, they supply the rods, the worms, and the excitement.
And the fish.
And the fish.
Right.
And they train you too.
They train you, right. And then also coming up is Spring Festival by the Rotary Club, another lovely poster. That's taking place on Bay State, at Bay State Commons on Sunday, May twentieth, so usually it's on Saturday, it's on Sunday. It's a free admission, lots going on, music, food trucks, music, food trucks, kids carnival, even fun for Fido with a doggy dash and spa, so.
Okay, thank you. And no one else from the audience on open forum already. Now, do we have a request to approve the minutes of March fifteenth?
Motion to do that.
Second.
Okay, did anyone have any changes or comments on those minutes? All those in favor? Okay, five to zero. A motion for the minutes of March seventeenth? Excuse me?
That was fifteen.
Fifteen.
That was fifteen.
March seventeenth?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Yes. Okay, any comments on that? Changes? All those in favor? Okay, and request to approve minutes of March twenty-seventh?
Motion to do that?
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, any comments, concerns, all those in favor? Okay.
Thank you, Paula.
Yes, thank you, Paula, very much.
That's great.
Now, we have a public hearing, is it thirty-five? Yes, a little bit past, okay. So, do I have a motion to open a public hearing?
Move to open the public hearing for the site plan review for the high school athletic fields improvements, ninety West Main Street in Westboro.
In a second?
Second.
Sorry.
Okay. And I believe we have, are you Chris Huntress?
I am.
All right. Oh, you made a motion to open, oh, yeah. Okay, now we have to vote on it, sorry.
Sorry.
All those in favor? Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board of Selectmen, my name's Chris Huntress, and with Huntress Associates and Huntress Sports out of Andover. Been working with your school department for the last year to year and a half on athletic field improvements at the high school. We filed on March twentieth for a site plan review, which is why we're here. We've met with your Technical Review Committee, headed up by the Building Department and the Town Engineer, and we've met with most, if not all, of the town departments at that time who've submitted letters, and we've reviewed those letters as well. So, I will, Madam Chair, maybe take your direction, I'm happy to take you through the plan for a few minutes.
Please.
And answer any questions, would that work?
Not at all. We can, is the best place, right there, Jim, or over there?
They'll get it from back here.
Oh, 'cause we don't, we're not seeing it on ours yet.
Anybody want to come up and see this, please?
The project consists really of two major improvements at the, at the high school, the first being your existing track and field. And the track and field orientation is obviously located here, the school building would be just off, off the page here, and then there's upper field here, since your existing baseball field here, and the access road that comes around the back, and the upper parking lot is for orientation. The, the work at the track and field involves removal of the existing rubber surface, the rubber surface on the asphalt at the track. That will be removed, the asphalt will remain but be repaired, and you'll get a brand-new rubber surface. It'll be red, I think right now it's black, so it'll be red. And the, within the track and field itself, within the track itself, the natural grass field, or the natural grass D areas, which are these locations here that are kind of shaped like a D within the oval track, those will become natural turf, I'm sorry, synthetic turf on the far end and track surface on the end closer to me. And the synthetic turf that's within the field right now will be replaced, and a new turf will be put in. That new turf will have a pad system underneath that is beneficial and helpful from a concussion and impact attenuation standpoint. So, it's been proven over years that the introduction of a pad under these fields not only lengthens the life of your field, it'll last longer, but it significantly reduces head injuries and lower extremity injuries as well. The synthetic turf system that you have now contains a mixture of infill that's sand and chrome rubber. The proposed field will have what's called Envirofill, which is a coated sand product, so there is no SPR chrome rubber that will be used within this field. The other work that's happening at the, at the track and field includes the removal of the visitor grandstand, which is on this side, in favor of a new long jump facility that will be placed there, and a new grandstand and handicap access on this side. Your existing grandstand, although has held up remarkably well, is not decod, and is no longer grandfathered in a project of this size. So, you will be getting a new twelve-hundred seat grandstand with a press box, that press box will be fully handicapped accessible, as will the grandstands from both the top and the bottom. And really, that's by the grade, if you recall, there's a hill that kind of sweeps up from the track to the top here, so there'll be handicapped accessibility down the bottom. And we're building a concrete and brick walkway to bring you to the back of the grandstand, and that will again be entirely handicapped accessible, so you can get to both the bottom and top of the structure. And finally, at the track and field, the other major improvement would be sports lighting, which was subject to town meeting and review by the Planning Board, which I'm sure you recall. The, through the town meeting process, we developed a location plan for where those would be and dimensions from the neighbors. I can report that that didn't change at all throughout the construction document phase, and the lights are exactly where we showed them at town meetings, so there's really been no change to that location at all. Jump to the, the upper field, which is right here, which, that is a natural grass field presently, it's used predominantly for practice. It's undersized and really can't host much from a varsity perspective. You do use it for some field events for track and field and discus and the like. The new proposal includes expansion of that field with retaining walls and cut and fills. We will be cutting into the hill in this direction, we'll cut, and we'll be filling out over the grade over here with a new retaining wall to widen that field and make it so that it is now suitable for varsity competition, for all sports. Both fields will be able to accommodate, size-wise, all five varsity sports, you would have football, soccer, men's, women's, crossfield, hockey, would all be able to participate. The new field, the upper field, has a walkway that follows predominantly the existing location of the walkway now. Starts in the parking lot, comes up around the field, along the edge, and then exits out. To, you have a ropes course in the far back, so they wanted to make sure there was access to that, and they would be viewing along that as well. The walkway and field itself on upper field will also be handicapped accessible, and they'll be viewing areas for, for handicapped and able-bodied individuals. The, the other minor improvements that are happening up there, there will be, not sports lighting, but there will be pedestrian-level lighting for folks as it gets dark and starts to turn to dust, that they can find their way out without any problem. The synthetic turf surface that I described for the track and field is the same type of surface that'll be on upper field. It will have a pad, it will have Envirofill, and there'll be no SPR rubber. So, that's a big overview right there, but I'm happy to stop and take any questions that you might have.
It's been presented to us several different times, so I think we're okay with that, unless someone from the board has a question?
Yeah, I have several.
Let's have a motion, and then we'll have discussion then, okay. Bruce, you want to make a motion?
To approve the plan? Sure. All right. I move to approve the site plan application for the Westboro High School Field Improvement Project to construct new fields, stands, and lighting at ninety West Main Street, subject to the conditions stated in the decision dated May eighth, two thousand eighteen, as attached.
Okay, now, any discussion? Motion and a second? We have discussion, Sayad, you had a question?
Yeah, I have several questions. So, the, the community that lives in that neighborhood had reached out to me, and they had several questions. And I don't know if you're the right person, but I see members of the school committee, and they can help with that. So, the, the neighborhood had requested a committee to engage with, to see who would be overseeing the field use. This is something that the school committee said that they would consider, have they reached a decision? Because the neighborhood, the people in the neighborhood would really like to be involved with the usage of this facility, or of the tracks. The second thing was that the, that the community was concerned about was the sound system. I don't think the residents in that area, or at least they're concerned, that they have no idea what to expect. They were apparently promised a sound study, and that has not been provided. Has that been shared with the residents?
Could I interject, just we can do as the board wishes? This isn't, isn't really relevant to the site plan review, I believe. This is something really that has to deal with school administration, is that correct, Jim?
First one, I think.
Did it come under site plan review?
I, I think it would come under site plan review, just based on the fact that it's related to approving the site plan as it's been presented, and how it might impact the area around there.
Okay.
But, I, well.
They're certainly not difficult questions to answer, so.
Sure, I just wanted, sometimes things are included in the site plan on the answer, just wanted to make sure we were following the rules. Okay.
Perhaps if Sayad has other questions, you put them all on the table, so we can answer more.
Okay, do you mind?
No, go ahead.
All right, so the, there was a question that was, the other questions that were raised was the target sound levels for the evening and night games would be based on measurements made during the Friday night lights game, instead of the average Saturday night football game, can you address that also when you? And then, who is gonna be in charge of the sound system? I guess the residents have been told that it's gonna be students and not adults, or will there be adults supervising those, those students? And I guess the other last question is, how many night or evening games would there be? There's a laundry list, I'm sorry, Mr. Dorrett.
No, that's okay. We had a public hearing with the public, March fifth. Ian was there and perhaps others as well. Shelby was there, and I think it lasted for maybe two and a half hours.
Okay.
All those questions were put to us, the entire team, while we were there, and many of them were addressed at that meeting. In fact, I think all of them were addressed positively. And some other information that came, came about was also included in the specifications for the bid. Specifically, the sound background information was collected and was made public at that meeting. And so, if that person wasn't at the meeting and still asked the same question, but we do have background information that was collected and it was made public.
And so, who do, just to, to follow up, so i- is this information available online, is there like a site, or can I?
I think it is.
Sayad, if I, if I may, in your packet, page twenty, thirty, page thirty is, speaks to lighting at least.
Okay.
Okay, just not to sound.
Yeah, but the sound was as well.
Correct.
And it is online.
It is online?
Yep.
Yep.
Let's see, one of your other questions was, who controls the sound and what have we designed into it? I'll let Chris answer that. It will have a maximum set point that is not controlled by anybody on the field at that time, and it will be based on, on, in effect, what the normal sound level would be. And it won't, it will regulate the sound such that it won't be an extreme if in fact, you know, some event that causes, let's say, exuberance occurs. Chris, you want to speak to?
So, I'll speak to the design of the sound system. We specified it, and we worked with a company called Pro Acoustics out of Texas, who helped us design it and specify it. The system that, that you own in the specifications has six speakers, and they're, they're each in tandem, so there's groups of two, three groups of two, speakers that would just aim at the, at the stadium, or just aim at the field, and you can control them and turn them off. So, if, if noises are a concern to the neighbors, you can turn off other speakers and just address noise and control to the, to the grandstand itself, or just to the field, or if you want them all on, you could turn them all on. The request that came out of our March fifth meeting, is, is there an upper limit or a maximum that we could put on the, on the speaker system? We, to the amplifier. We did reach out to the manufacturer, there is a set screw of sorts that can be put in, so that they couldn't crank it all the way up to, you know, maximum amount. That is something that has to be done with the field engineer during the time of installation, so it is in the specification that they have to work with us on that and make sure that that happens. But there will be some testing of that sound range to make sure that we hit the decibel levels at the, at the edge and make sure that we can do it. The sound system that we have is capable of producing more sound than probably the neighbors might like to hear, so we need to make sure that we adjust it correctly and get it to the point where it's, that set screw will limit.
And so, you'll involve, so I hope the neighborhood committee or, the neighborhood will be involved in setting those limits, or?
The limits will be set by the school committee, by vote of the school committee. The discussions that we've had in the past basically will allow the public, as part of a public meeting, just like we're doing here, to speak to the school committee and address any of those issues as we go forward.
Okay.
In addition to that, we will have sensors along the property line on Charles Street, which will record what in fact has been, what has occurred, so that we have a way to check back as well in terms of what events have happened, and so that we can, in effect, self-regulate this system.
Great. Sorry, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments, concerns?
I do have a question, and it's a follow-up to the, the March fifth meeting. So, there was a request that there be put in a system of kind of elevation if there are issues or complaints that arise, and so I don't need to know what the policy is, it just has the, I don't, I'm not aware if the school committee has met yet to, or the Rangers on Track team to develop that policy of escalation.
We have not yet. Obviously, we intend to honor everything we promised at town meeting.
Yep.
And in fact, it will be on an agenda, to the extent that, you know, that there are issues that are raised. Clearly, nobody knows anything until we have the first game, and I'm sure we'll be pretty busy after that.
Yep.
But, again, they're open meetings, anybody is welcome to come. We will address those issues and design a policy around those promises that we made at town meeting. I think, based on the outcome of the March fifth meeting, I think it was a very positive approach to the neighborhood in dealing with those issues that were on the table. As far as how many games there'll be, it hasn't changed. The statements made at town meeting still stand, and we will control the number of games and, and what sports are played on those various days as we promised at town meeting.
Okay.
So, there's nothing new, if you will, in terms of, of what the school committee's interest is relative to the, the upgrades and sound system and light system than what we've already said.
Okay, anything else? Okay, so we had a motion and a second, we've had a discussion, all those.
It is a public hearing, so see those cards.
Oh, yeah, is there anybody from the audience who'd like to speak? Seeing none, so we're now ready for a vote?
Actually, there's somebody in the back.
Okay, I couldn't see her. Please approach.
I'm Louis Smith, I'm at thirty-three Ruggles. Actually, just coming from the public, there was an indication that the sound study was available, and I guess the question was where that is, because it's, at the time when we had the meeting on March fifth, it was being generated, or the data was gonna be there, but it wasn't, at the moment, they didn't have anything that was directed towards us, and so, that'd be my question at this time, is where actually can we find that? If we wanted to review as a member of the public?
I think Mr. Dorrett spoke to where it was.
It's on the school committee website, I have to ask Amber or anybody else who knows exactly where it is, but it was put on the website as a result of our discussions on March fifth.
Okay, all right.
So, do you know how to get a hold of somebody?
We'll just, I guess we'll hunt around and see if we can find it.
Okay.
And if not, I think you, you emailed me, sorry.
Okay.
Okay, and if not, you, you know how to get a hold, you'd need.
Yes, yes, all right.
Okay, that was it.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else from the audience? Okay, seeing none, so I think now we are ready for a vote. All those in favor? We've got five to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, I need a motion to close our public hearing.
So moved. Second.
And a second, all those in favor? So, it's closed, okay. Now, we have garden clubs request to re-landscaped the rotary, a very interesting proposal from Beverly Linane.
I'm Beverly Linane, president of Westboro Garden Club. We heard that there was gonna be new walkways on the rotary and paving downtown, and we thought, what an awesome time to put a new garden on the rotary and replace the shrubs that are there. So, this is our presentation for that. We're gonna work, we're working with Weston Nurseries with this plan, and I thank you for listening. But I can show you what, what the plantings are. If you come in, on, on this side is the cork and grain side, down at the bottom here, is where you enter. There'll be perennials at the, at the beginning here, and we're gonna put daffodils in in the fall, so they'll be blooming next spring. The next three circles will be pink drift roses, then there's boxwoods here and here, and then this little line of- of shrubs going up here are ilex, which is a Japanese holly. They get to be about three feet tall, require no pruning at all. Mostly, it's very low maintenance, the whole garden. And on the outer perimeter, those will go here too. And then on the, these bigger shrubs out here are going to be summer sweet, which have beautiful white flowers in the summer and a nice scent. And beyond that, there's low-growing sumac, there's three of those that have yellow flowers in the spring and a red fuzzy berry in the summer. And then they turn bright orange or red in the fall. And then on the far end, there'll be more bulbs up in here as well as lady's mantle, which is another pretty perennial that has kind of tall, fluffy flowers on it. So that's the plan. We were hoping to have it all done by Memorial Day, but with the ti-, the way it's all been going, everybody's behind, the season's behind. So I think it's probably going to be early June before we get it done. The DPW is going to remove all the standing shrubs now and they're going to put a water source in forest. So we'll have a watering spot. So, that's the plan.
Okay, so do I have a motion and then we can have a discussion?
I'll move to approve the planting plan as presented by the Garden Club with final approval by the DPW director.
Second.
Okay, I'm sorry, Syed wanted to make that motion, I'm sorry.
It's all, it's all good.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Go ahead. I just have a question. Can, I know the Garden Club is doing this, but can like members of the community contribute in monetary donations to this project? And if so, I know elsewhere in the town, you know, you, you have these plaques if you, for those, you know, around town for those bushes. So I'm wondering if people give money for this project, will there be a plaque that can, that would recognize them?
We haven't discussed that. I guess it's a possibility, but we haven't discussed it, so.
People could always donate to the Garden Club for their projects however.
We have. We've lots of projects around town and it, we're paying for this. So out of one, one, a couple of donations that we've received for downtown beautification, so I think it's a good project.
Just, I think I noted in the, in the design here, but the existing trees, the spruce and all that.
They're all gonna stay.
Those gonna stay?
They're all gonna stay. And there's another little tiny line in along, in this perimeter right in here. There's gonna be like, it's called liriope. It's a little low-growing grass that has purple flowers just to soften the walkway against the stone, which we thought would be pretty.
Great.
Be a nice seasonal walk-through and beautify downtown.
Makes it beautiful.
Questions on this end?
Not at all.
I have a question. I, you've probably done this, but have you talked with the chief of police about the line of sight and how this might change, what people can see?
They're all very low, very low growing. None of them are more than three feet.
So your consultant from Weston has helped you figure out that it won't?
They'll be lower than what's there now.
Oh, okay, great.
The only, the tallest ones will be the boxwoods and those are very slow growing and.
And they can also be trimmed, the boxwood, yeah. Okay. Well, what I wanted to add was that you have an annual sale on May nineteenth?
We do.
And I also wanted the public in general to know that the trees that are blooming in Westboro right now, all up and down Main Street and that are used for Christmas lights in the winter, don't just happen. They're because of a great deal of effort on people, at least including the Garden Club, Chris Allen, Edie Wexler, Bruce Forrestal, and then a lot of DPW staff, Danny Monahan and Jim Johnson. They, we are having a contract taken out to trim those trees in the future. So don't be surprised after they're finished blooming if you see a sort of a drastic pruning, but it's only going to improve their health and appearance in the future. But I want to thank the Garden Club for all the varied things that you're involved in for all of us.
It's our pleasure.
Yeah. So are we ready for a vote on that?
Yes.
All those in favor? There you go.
Alright.
Keep it to you guys.
Thank you.
I have copies of the plan too, for everybody.
We have them on here, but if you leave them out for the public to see, that might be really nice. Miss Linane. Okay, we now have a request to reappoint Gibbs Mitchell as a registrar of voters. Our town clerk is gonna present that. Our assistant town clerk?
Hi.
Hello?
So just as a background, every town must have a board of registrars. We have a board of three plus the town clerk. They serve three years fixed overlapping terms. And Gibbs Mitchell, who are asking to be reappointed, has been on the board of registrars since April two thousand.
And he doesn't happen to be here tonight?
No.
Okay, alright. So do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint A. Gibbs Mitchell as registrar of voters for a term to expire April 1st, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion?
I have a question. Do, I, I noticed in, I was just doing some research, this is the first time I'm doing this, I was doing some research. In other communities, is there, I don't know if the practice in Westboro, is there, is there a concurrence of the major political parties when there's a registrar of, of things being appointed?
So you're, you have to have representation, you're supposed to, of each party.
Okay.
It's my understanding that the, the Democratic Town Committee, Republican Town Committee, when you're looking for a new one, they would present options.
Oh, okay.
Right now, we do have both parties represented. And it's actually equal if you put our town clerk into the mix.
Okay, alright. Any other discussion?
Sounds very purple to me.
All those in favor? Okay. And thank you to Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you.
For doing such long work. Okay.
Jen's here.
Is Jen here, yes?
Yes.
Okay, oh that's, alright, just, okay. Now we have a discussion and vote to relocate the Fourth of July block party, which is always a great deal of fun. So Jen?
Hi, I'm Jen, I'm the Recreation Director. So we're just here tonight to talk about July 4th block party. Normally, it's held outside here on West Main Street. And as we started our planning process, a few weeks ago, we reached out to the police to just kind of get their blessing like we typically do. And this year, Chief Lowry and Lieutenant Minardi have met with me and had some pretty big concerns, safety concerns about, we shut down the street and so that I guess causes a big traffic mix-up at the rotary. And so they suggested that maybe we look at moving it. So we're proposing to move it to Baystate Common. And we love, everyone loves the block party out here, but we certainly don't want to go against the police and we don't want anything, you know, you know, getting in the way of safety at all. So that is our plan. I think we're just here to maybe, you know, see if you guys have any questions or in discussion and the police, if they want to talk more about their safety concerns. But we're pretty much on the same side about what to do.
Okay, we'll have a motion and then we'll have discussion. Oh yeah, says no action, okay. Any discussion?
Definitely with respect to the police and fire department. I know I did have some contact personally from folks, either on the community, on the committee or in the community. I'm assuming this has gone through the Fourth of July committee, they're endorsing.
We brought it to them and they're disappointed. I mean, it's a longstanding tradition, but again, it's kind of hard, I mean, the police, we obviously trust and respect them, so we're not going to go against them. And that was the same feeling from the entire committee, was that they're disappointed. But if this is what the police are saying, then we're gonna go with what the police are saying. So, I don't know if they wants to talk more about it. I definitely paraphrase what they said, but.
So I had some discussions with the staff, obviously being new here. And I can tell you, the rank and file that have been here, especially the ones that have been here for many, many years, they won't work it because they feel, you know, it's unsafe. And they feel that it should be moved. Lieutenant Minardi can, can explain to you some of the outlining issues. From my standpoint, I'm gonna obviously agree with my staff when they bring to my attention that there's a safety concern for the public. Looking at the venue, especially after the Lily Parade, as you know, it's a very short parade, we shut the road down and we control that whole area. With this type of event, it's so large with people everywhere, it causes a great concern on Friday night from five to nine PM with all the issues we have in that rotary. Twenty, thirty years ago, we didn't have the traffic and some of the issues we have today, some of the safety concerns that we have today in this day and age. If, if for some reason this doesn't work out and we go back to this venue, I would make some very strong security recommendations that would be a little costly to the town. I think looking at that venue, especially after the Lily Parade, I think would accommodate this event very well. The lieutenant has, has a route for the hay wagon ride where if we were to bring it here, I, I would recommend that we wouldn't have the hay wagon ride because we'd be shutting this road down with the help of DPW, large dump trucks. So there's no really way for the, for them to turn around. And having that, and I, I think in neighborhoods, is a danger out here because all the side streets are all congested as well. So it's not just the rotary. And I can let the lieutenant, you know.
I think you covered it pretty well. A huge issue is the amount of pedestrian traffic through the rotary throughout the event. A lot of people pack over at Bay State Commons already and they're constantly going back and forth. And there's seven or eight crosswalks over there that are getting used. And with the amount of confusion and congestion with traffic in the rotary, once we close West Main Street, frankly, a lot of people have no idea where they're supposed to go. So it, it creates a very dangerous situation, especially for pedestrians.
And we have had arrests in the middle of this at times, two OUIRs I believe.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, other concerns. So looking at that venue, and I, I have scoped it out a bit, I, I can just envision families on blankets with their kids, a band playing, vendors around, other businesses potentially recouping some business. If there's inclement weather like we've had in the past that I've been told, now we have shelter in areas of people who can go just under the pavilion. So my suggestion would be, we give this a try. And if not, what I will say is, I came to you, we gave you our best advice as far as this, but we're gonna do the very best with the direction that we give.
I think 'cause it's such a big change, it would, there's no harm in having it as a motion and a second, then it goes on record that we actually approved it. So could I have a motion to make the change and then we have more discussion?
Yeah. I make a motion to hold the Fourth of July block party in Westboro at the Bay State Commons instead of the West Main Street in front of the town hall.
Second.
Okay. Now, did you have a comment, Shelby?
Yeah, I just, you know, having had the Spring Festival, as I announced, should I hold that up again? Free advertisement, right here. That it's been a great location. I totally agree. When Jen and I initially talked about it, we talked about, I mentioned the hay ride, how's that gonna work? We talked about a couple of things. But I think it's a great venue. Kids can kind of safely run around, they can flock down on the grass. It's just sort of a protected area. We now have the playground that's there. So that's sort of additional free play in, in the evening. And it uses a spot that I think in many in the town feels sometimes underutilized. So I think it's, although change is difficult from kind of moving here from that downtown feel, I, I think it's a great decision for many reasons. And, and I hadn't thought about the public safety issues, which you never really want to think about, about cars and people and pedestrian traffic, but I'm all for it. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I really do. I think we can never guarantee safety, but I do think it's very, it's a safer venue.
Anything else?
No, I think, I think it's a great idea, supportive. I think it actually probably fits what's happening better. I mean, having a bandstand there versus setting something up in front of town hall, better environment. And then the parking piece, people are parking there anyways. It has a lot of parking.
There's restrooms there, there's a whole host of positives by moving into that venue, is my opinion.
It's really one of the reasons we developed Bay State Commons, so we can have public meetings and celebrations there. So I don't know why we didn't think of it sooner. It's great. Anything else? Okay. All those in favor? Okey-dokey. Good luck and thanks. And welcome, Jen. You're already doing a great job. Okay, we have a school committee member request to consider members for the charter review committee.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Lisa Edinburgh, Nash Street, speaking as a member of the school committee. Thank you, Lee and Jim, for adding this issue to your agenda. After choosing to deviate from your original plan and reconfiguring to a nine-member resident charter review committee, many questions have arisen for us. We wondered who will be chairing this committee in developing the agendas. Did the finance committee know ahead of time that they would not be representing on this committee until it was maybe too late to apply for it themselves? Would any of the residents upon the committees actually have applied for a, a spot on the committee? Do the current nine residents on the committee now, did they know, do they know that there are no town representatives, no town government committee representatives on, in the group? Would they have applied if they knew that they were not? So these are just some of the questions that have arisen. Even one of the applicants during the interview process stated that he didn't actually research the governments prior as to not be biased because he assumed that the people on the committee would inform them about the different types of government. Wouldn't representatives from the planning board, the finance committee, school committee, help the process of such an important and vital decision for our town? And a, a decision that could affect our town for many decades, if not a century? And please note, I am not suggesting you alter your nine residents that you've chosen so diligently with due process. You did a great job. They're, they are an impressive group of individuals. The school committee has run several fourteen-plus member committees in the past, including, and quite effectively and efficiently, including the calendar committee, the school start committee, the Rangers on Track committee. So it, it can be done very well. It's also important to note that a voting member is very different than getting an opinion from those town government officials. I ask you to reconsider the, the configuration of the charter review committee, to add representatives from government committees as voting members back into the group, including a finance committee member, a school committee member, board of selectmen member. Did I mention planning board?
No.
Member? And a planning board member? I think this is just such an important decision for our town and it's not to be taken lightly. So I ask for you to consider this.
Okay, Mr.?
Lisa, thanks very much for your comments. We actually have the authority to put that committee together and we deliberated right here live. I mean, Ian, Ian was the one who presented the idea. And I think I mentioned that I'm, I was willing to jump off that cliff. And we all did. We all decided to, not jump off a cliff, but decided to join in on this idea. But we deliberated right here out in the open as freely as, as you could possibly be. And I thought the idea was new, it was novel and actually made sense. And we had people here interviewing and they continued to interview. No one, no one said anything about, I don't wish to do this anymore because there aren't town elected officials on, on the, the committee. And I think it's one thing, we, we made a decision, we agreed, I think it was five, nothing. And so it's something that I think we should hold a line with and be resolute about and move forward. I think it's gonna be an excellent committee. And I think they have the opportunity, we're gonna be doing a strategic plan at the same time, coincidentally. So it's gonna be a wonderful learning opportunity for everybody on the, on that committee to participate in the strategic plan and see where we're headed, where we're heading as a town, we all are heading as a town. And then make a decision or make a recommendation based on a, a whole host of research and opportunities to understand what the consequences would be, could be for staying with our former, our, our current form of government or changing.
So on the last two meetings that you've actually had under vacancies, it actually said three residents under. In other words, even on the, the day you were making decisions, it literally kept saying three resident vacancies. So it didn't actually change even in your agenda. So I'm saying that it is very possible that people were unaware of the change that actually occurred unless they were listening at that exact moment to your meeting. So I think that there, and I also think that there's a very difference between a member giving, so part of the response might be that members of the governing boards would come and give their input. But there's a very different type of relationship between offering information versus really contributing. The scope of contribution is very different. One is answering questions versus offering their thoughts and information. And I, I think it's very different. So it is possible that when you are making this decision, that in retrospect, you might think about what that would really look like further on. And I'm just bringing you some questions that certainly could come about.
Debbie?
So thank you very much. I did support the vote to move to nine residents as we discussed here, as Bruce already mentioned. However, in doing so, I still had reservations about excluding town officials. So actually, following that vote, I had a conversation with Mr. Malloy just to, sort of as a gut check to that concern. We had a great conversation. He shared with me some background as to how other municipalities have handled similar committees. And that it's not uncommon at all, first of all, to have just residents on such a committee and they can work very successfully. And we talked about sort of the pros and cons of size of committee, et cetera, et cetera. Being a new member of this board, the learning curve is steep. Who does what? How does it all work? How does it? How does it come together? So I have a profound appreciation, if you will, for that background that folks like Jim Robbins could offer, someone with history with the finance committee, school committee, et cetera. So I think you make a great point, a number of great points. You know, one of the points that we deliberated on here was, and I know Bruce, you were concerned with it at that time, which was changing stride, even in terms of the composition at that time. And was that fair to sort of all concerns, so to speak? I, I think it speaks highly of a board that is willing to reconsider its position. And so I appreciate you bringing it forward. I don't have an opinion at this time as Mr. Trump agrees.
I'll ask you then.
I'll say it first.
Actually, I think Ms. Edinburgh brings up several great points. And, you know, initially when we discussed this, I felt that we were rushing to make a decision. I think the points that you raise are very valid ones. This is, you are absolutely correct. This is a big committee, this is a big assignment. And I think there is no reason to rush into this. I think we do need to set parameters. I do, and quite honestly, I'm somewhat ashamed of myself and that I didn't ask those questions. I'm glad that you are. And the fact that you're raising them and that we don't have good answers is, to me, is a big deal. And I think as a board, we should take what she's saying, consider it, and then make a decision. I do not think that there needs to be a rush to proceed. I think we should focus on these questions and we should ponder them and make, you know, come to, maybe put this on another agenda item and to vote to see where we stand. I don't think we should necessarily close our minds to what she's saying.
Mr. Johnson?
I think my thoughts here, and thanks for bringing these up. I think these were, a lot of those were discussion points that we had. And I think as a committee, you know, we set responsibilities. I think we talked about the strategic plan and the fact that we discussed whether the committee made sense to a point now or wait till after the strategic plan. And we discussed that and said, let's start now. We've gone through the process, we interviewed, we have a lot of interest here from community members. Let's do it, but we will set the direction. The direction is that they will be an active participant and listener in the strategic planning process and we will, you know, their process of doing that will commence, really, in terms of debate after they've done that. I think in that same light, we talked about removing these town departments and what that meant. And I think, again, from our side of setting the scope and direction is to be pretty clear with this committee that our expectation is that they are bringing in all affected parties, spending as much time as necessary. I would look for, so take a step back, I'm still supportive of going the way they were. I echo some of the other board members' comments. I think this is an idea that really strikes at comments that I personally heard during this last campaign and I think the two candidates, new elected selectmen heard as well, is that, you know, people thought that that there was not enough involvement of folks in town. And I think this is a way to really empower people in town and see how it goes. I think we do need to keep a close eye on it and ensure that they're doing that. And I think at any time, if the school committee, the planning board, finance committee has concerns or don't, does not believe that that committee is listening or functioning as they would, please come to us and I think personally, I would encourage them, the board, to rectify this. Because it is, I mean, this is huge for the town of what we're going through. And it's something that will take a lot of time, there'll be a lot of meetings, a lot of open forums. I think it, all of that will come out. So I'm still supportive of keeping it the way it is. I don't think we revisit it, we've already appointed this committee. Number of the things on our list, I think we move forward and see how it goes and ensure that we make sure that the voices are heard and that debate is had. And if it's not from our side and also from town meeting side, this is, those are the questions that the community is gonna ask as well. And the community is the one eventually that gets the opportunity to vote if there is a recommendation to change anything. And I'm not personally sure there'll be any recommendation to change anything, but that's what is up to the committee to do.
I think one of my concerns is the fact that you just mentioned that if we, that there's nobody overseeing it. And you even said, if someone sees that maybe they need some support, that someone will step forward. As you meant, you actually asked the question during the interviews, I watched nine out of twelve. How many, you literally asked, have you ever been on a government committee before? And all of them said no, which means you don't have someone who has been in that position where the overseeing part, which you mentioned, you know, would necessarily take place? So that would be one of my concerns.
You could have oversight without having someone from every single committee. Mr. Crandall, this isn't an open hearing, but if you have something different to add?
There was one point I wanted to make sure that was clear and I apologize for stepping in, but I think Lisa's point may have been misunderstood because we do understand that there was open debate. But because there was an assumption that certain people would be on the committee, you may not have had people apply because they already assumed that somebody from those town committees would be selected. So the candidate pool in which you chose your people may not have been complete because there was already an assumption that others were included.
Thank you. Okay, good point. So, just, I'll get to you, absolutely. If we wanted to follow up on your, what sounded like a suggestion to actually reconsider how we appointed this, we would have to have a motion to put this on a future agenda for reconsideration.
I would make that, sorry.
Okay, but in the meantime, you had one more thing to say, Sheldon?
A couple items. I think that Ms. Edinburgh's comment around, and this is what I struggled with in the initial discussion, the voting member piece. I think to have, to be a voting member on a committee carries with it a certain weight and responsibility and expected level of engagement. Mr. Malloy and I, again, in our conversation, talked about in the last Charter Review, he wasn't actually on the committee, but he attended a lot of those meetings. So that was great. Very vested in the process. And there were probably others from the town, we didn't talk about specifics, but who may have also attended. But I do, I do think that having, sort of asking, whether it's through Mr. Malloy or as a board, asking individuals of the town to participate and not having a voting voice, sort of to me leaves it open as, do I really have to do this? Is it a requirement? Am I, you know, am I really vested? What's my role here? How far can I kind of step and engage into the discussion, et cetera? So I think that voting piece, I just want to echo that that's something of concern. I, and I apologize because I went back into my notes on the twenty-seventh and I think we approved the minutes, but I'm trying to find them in our packet.
Yeah, they were mailed, they were emailed, so.
Okay, okay. Okay, they were separate. Okay, thank you. All right, because I.
They didn't get in the packet.
So, okay, thank you. So, but my notes, and I could be wrong, because that's why I was trying to reference it, is that we weren't unanimous on that vote. When we went to, we, it was, when we went to the nine and all citizens, it was a three to two vote. So just for point of clarification and historical context.
On the question of nine?
On the nine, all citizens.
Okay.
All citizens, no municipal, you know, department heads, et cetera. So just, we, at that time, I think it was, like, again, speaking for myself, great idea, nine, lots more citizen engagement, I totally agree with Selkman Johnson, but.
It wasn't unanimous.
It wasn't unanimous. Okay, thank you.
Point taken. Yep. Really, this discussion is so we can decide whether we want to reconsider this at a future agenda. So I don't think we need any more pros and cons of how it would work one way or the other, because that would be in that reconsideration. So do I have a motion from a board member saying they would like to have us put this on a future agenda for reconsideration?
I make that motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on putting this on a future agenda?
Yeah, just a point of where you mentioned that none of the members of this committee, proposed committee, now proposed committee, have committee experience. And actually, John Arnold has been elected as town moderator. He's also served on the finance committee and was chair of the finance committee for a while. Ed Bain served on the finance committee, I believe he was also a chair. Carolyn Spring was on the finance committee. So there's a lot of finance committee.
And she was on a policy review, a service.
And she was also, right, charter, and then charter review. Yeah, thanks very much. Hank Rousch also, finance committee. Bob Deisher was the chair of the last Charter Review Commission. So there's a lot of wealth of knowledge of how committees work and specifically how, forms of government. John Arnold is pretty good at certainly understanding how town meeting works and.
But of elected officials, I only heard, is it John Arnold for, in other words, finance committee is not an elected?
No, it's a point, no, right, right, no, I just mentioned that John was, he was elected as town moderator. Yeah, and actually, when you look at it, it's probably the most democratic way of looking, of reviewing a town charter, all citizens. So it's as democratic, just about as democratic.
With response to that democratic, first of all, if you actually look, and this is one of the points that I raised at the, when we were discussing this, there are, how many men on that committee?
There are almost all men except.
Eight men.
Eight men and one, only one woman.
Okay.
So I'm trying to understand how that is democratic, but I'll defer to.
I think, just want to hold the committee right now. Our question was, do we want to reconsider this? Not to argue the pros and cons of how it would be reconstituted if we reconstituted. So can we keep our discussion to that one question? Do we want to reconsider it? Okay, we have a motion and a second to reconsider it. Any more discussion on that particular point? All right, all those in favor of reconsideration? We have three. All those opposed? We have two. So we will put it on a future agenda for reconsideration.
Could I ask the, could I ask the chair to make sure that you send a note apologizing to all the members that we've, that we've appointed and said that their positions may be rescinded?
I don't think we'd been considering that.
Or at least let them know that they should come in front of us if we're gonna reconsider the.
I think, your question is good because I was thinking it was just pointed toward, are we taking things from other committees? And the way it was moved, it could be to reconsider the entire configuration.
So.
So perhaps we should change the motion?
Yes.
Yeah, because I don't think, I won't speak for Dr. Selkman Marshall, but I think we want to keep the people that are there. Our point is, and I think this is what you're, that we can add additional people and that we should encourage those additional people. I would encourage your committee, your school committee, to encourage people to apply. That's what we're getting at.
Well, that's, again, going beyond the scope. Would you like to amend your motion so it's clear that the reconsideration of the configuration would only be as to appointing members from town committees that had been appointed to prior committees like this?
Okay.
No, not town employees. This is specifically AFC, FinCom, Planning Board, School Committee, Board of Selectmen, the ones that had previously been on a Charter Review Committee. You have any comment on that, Jim?
Well, my comment would be that I don't believe if you look at the previous government study committees, that they were made up of those elected officials. The last time that we had a Charter Review Committee because the Board of Selectmen had a very specific charge, that it was to look at the review of the management structure of the town with the goal of centralizing the management organization. That the board included those specific elected officials so that their points of view could be considered in whether certain employees should or shouldn't be put under the town manager. And so it was a very specific reason, and it's the only time that the board, if you look at all of the other government study committees, included elected officials from other boards and committees.
Elected officials from other boards and committees. Okay, I think your point is very well taken because the motion that was given could mean we'd reconsider everybody. Now, Jim has thrown a ball at that a little bit because I think on our original list, we had, you know, FinCom, Board of Select, Board of Select and Planning Board and stuff. So, I guess what you could, we could have a motion that said would be to reconsider the adding to the committee other elected officials, but not changing the current appointees. I think that would make it clear and those people wouldn't be worried. Does that answer your question? Ian?
Yes.
Okay. So would you like to amend your motion?
I do, I do move to amend my motion as you've stated, Madam Chair.
Okay. You can amend it without us saying.
Okay.
Because it was your, your motion.
Oh, so I moved, sorry, I moved to amend, God, I hope I can get this, I moved to amend to, that this, that we recon. Paula, can you repeat some of that? Reconsider adding additional, additional members of other town boards.
Or elected officials.
Or elected officials.
Without, without. Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Would you like to read that back so we know that we have it right?
Okay, the motion was to amend, the original motion to reconsider adding other town boards and elected officials in addition to the current members.
The current nine members. I put the current nine members. Okay, all right. So, a second to that motion. Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor? We have three and we have two opposed? Do we have two opposed? Okay. All righty.
Thank you.
Now, we have a discussion vote to amend the Council on Aging Classification Plan and Job Description via, from our Assistant Town Manager, Ms. Williams.
I wasn't plugged in, sorry. So this is a request to make some of the positions that are currently in the Council on Aging that are contracted positions and employee positions. The Council on Aging Director Alma's here, who can also answer questions. But these positions are ones that, some of them are paid through a grant and some of them are just contracted services. And in review of these positions, we feel that they're more appropriately town employees. Like with the position that you approved last week with the part-time electrician inspector, it would give the Council on Aging Director a little more authority over their work, better ability to sort of monitor their hours. And it would also make them town employees so they would be covered by town insurances, which is really important for these positions as they go out into people's homes. So the positions, you know, for the public is the homemaker position, which is a sixteen-hour a week position, the handyman position, which is an eight-hour a week position, the Asian outreach worker is six hours a week, the elder outreach worker is ten hours a week, the outreach aid worker is nineteen hours a week, and the staff nurse is sixteen hours a week. So all of these positions fall below the twenty hours, which would require them to be benefited. So none of them are benefited. My understanding is that this is sort of the most that they would be working in a week. And so, you know, Alma would certainly be able to monitor their needs, or their clients' needs, and then send them out as needed. So I've created, we've created job descriptions for each of the positions and the request is to approve the job descriptions as well as the amendment to the classification plan, which would simply add those positions to it.
Okay. So do I have a motion?
I'd be glad to make a motion.
Just to note, as you're making, I think there's an extra elder outreach comment in our motion. So I think it's. Yep, so we just removed that one that says elder outreach out of the motion.
I just stutter sometimes.
What's that?
I just stutter sometimes.
That's what it looked like.
Thanks very much. I'll watch out for that speed bump. I'm hoping to amend the classification plan to include the positions of staff, homemaker, handyman, outreach aide, elder outreach worker, Asian outreach worker, and staff nurse in the Council on Aging Department as presented and further to approve the job descriptions presented for each position.
Second. Good job.
Any discussion? Do you have some questions?
I do. So some of my questions are repetitive for each position, so probably in the interest of time, I'll ask them and then we can sort of, your, did you say Alma's here?
Yeah.
Oh, she's back there. Hi. So, as we, as I brought up when we had this discussion about the electrician, it would be helpful to understand exactly how many hours today that homemaker, handyman, outreach aide, Asian outreach, staff nurse are actually providing. So it sort of was all approximate, but it would be nice, I think, for a future agenda item. Maybe that's what I'm asking, is if that's appropriate to have the Council on Aging Director provide that sort of report in totality of the programs that these folks are operating under. that these folks are operating under, and the number of hours historically that they're actually providing in the community.
And the clients, the number of clients they're serving?
Number of clients, yeah, exactly. The number of clients, number of hours, et cetera.
Okay. I think that may be partly because of your issue of control, that you'd have better control. So, I think Shelby was wondering, well, what kind of, why would this make it better control, and what, why was there a lack of control?
Sure. So, with a contract worker, they set their own schedule, and so, this Alma would be setting their schedule, which is appropriate for an employee, but you wouldn't do that for a contract. You know, unlike the, the position we discussed last time, you know, these hours per week are based on their current work schedule. Because they're hourly employees, and because their, their work is based on residents' needs, it is possible that they would work a little less. But certainly, Alma reports their, their hours worked.
Okay.
Okay. So, let me try to do one at a time. Our Asian outreach worker does work about six hours a week. She actually works more, gets paid for six. She does a lot of translating. She does outreach. She has a large group of people, I want to say between 20 and 30, 20 and 30 Chinese elders that she is in contact with during the course of a week or a month. Let me think. The handyman works one day a week. He's always worked one day a week. And he, yet again, we've had a couple situations recently, and Shelby will be happy to hear this, where he's worked on Saturday to install some lock boxes for people that are working during the week. You know, it just depends, right now, we're getting into air conditioner season, so he's going to be pretty busy putting air conditioners in. Let me think. The homemaker works generally 14 hours a week. She has some clients she sees every other week. Right now, there are 12 houses that she's going into. Like I said, some she sees every other week, some she sees every week, two she sees once a month. That's for support, so that they can stay home. Originally, we had asked for the extra two hours, because a year, was it a year ago or two years ago, where the home care, state home care budget was pretty substantially impacted, and we wanted to make sure we, we could cover the excess, if that was the case. I think Ian was involved in that discussion. He's shaking his head. Let me see, one, two, three. Elder outreach is, this was a position that we were lucky enough to get grant money to start it with, from the Kirksey Foundation, probably six years ago. And what we had found was that we had a lot of older gentlemen in the community, and once their wives passed away, we never saw them again. And so, this is a, it's actually Dennis Fenton has returned to work. He will go out and visit some of these guys, get them back into the community. And our outreach aide, she does a lot of follow-up from our outreach case manager, just making sure that things are in place, people are getting to appointments if they need to be. You know, she does some errands for folks. It's just, like I said, it's follow-up sort of after the crisis is over, which sadly we've had way too many of lately. And she works Mondays and Fridays, two eight-hour days.
Thank you. Have a follow-on question?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah?
Can I just, just for clarification, so, the nurse, oh, and the nurse, I forgot the nurse. The nurse works one day a week generally, but there are some days because of her schedule, she's able to work two days a week. Generally, she works five days during the month, and we're thrilled to have her on those two days a week. The outreach aide and the nurse are both paid for out of the State Formula Grant money, and the other four are, that money is already in our budget and has been for the last four or five years.
Just to follow on, so, I know that the, you said that the, in this, Kristi, you said that in moving to an employed position under the town, the money is already there. It's, it's really more just transfer of employment. But my question is, under employment laws, at least in the private sector, so maybe it's different under municipality, there's a, there's a requirement to pay for time and travel. So, I would think in a, like a subcontracted position, you know, we get sort of a number of hours worked, it's all rolled in together, we're not paying for that separately. So, has that been accounted for in what we would be incurring as these individuals would come on under the town?
Generally, what has happened with the contract employees is that they deduct their mileage on their income taxes, because we haven't been taking taxes out of their, out of their contract money. It's, you know, so, they've used their, instead of submitting their mileage to me to be reimbursed, they've deducted as part of their work from their contract, and it's, sometimes it has balanced out.
So, how does that impact, as they're coming on as a town employee, is that factored into the budget?
I don't see it as being a problem, honestly. I think my budget can handle it for...
Okay.
I mean, the nurse doesn't do a lot of outside traveling, the handyman does, and they certainly still can deduct it on their mileage if they, I mean, on their taxes if they choose to, so.
I would think it would be a requirement that we, by employment law, that we pay for time and travel?
And that's, and that's fine. Like I said, I'm, I think my budget can withstand that amount of money.
Okay. Just, let's just make sure we're doing the right thing there, just...
So, do you want that researched, is that what you're asking?
Yes. I just think that that would be great, to make sure we're doing that.
Okay, so we'll note, we'll get an answer back on that.
Thank you, Alma. Thank you very much.
Okay, any more discuss, oh, I just had one question, Alma. Has the new system that you have of tracking who comes to the center helped you with keeping track of how many clients these people are seeing, or is that not part of that database?
Never let it be said that with age comes patience. What are, what we're seeing as our problem is, if people come in, especially for larger classes or larger events, if there's two or three people standing in front of the kiosk to check in, they'll think they'll do it later, and then later they forget.
I meant, I meant for this sort of activity.
Oh, for those?
Yeah, is that in that tracking system, or is it just you keep track of it on paper, as how they report it?
I do.
Okay. Does the system have any expandability for that, Kristi, or would be more easily retrieved?
I'm not sure if that...
I'm not, I'm not sure the system would, would track that, because that's something that we can look into. We're actually going to be meeting to look at some other capabilities of the system, so we can make sure that we're using it to its full potential.
Okay, that was all. So, is there any more discussion before we vote on this? All those in favor?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to add that because the money is in expenses, at your
next meeting, we'll be asking you to move it from expenses to salaries.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor? Five is unanimous. Okay.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Malloy, discussion to provide animal control services to Grafton and to amend the classification plan. Oh, town, Assistant Town Manager.
As, as some members of the board are aware, in late FY '16, we, we had a 40-hour-a-week animal control officer, and we also had backup animal control services from a business in a surrounding town, providing that service when the person was sick or on vacation, or on weekends that they wanted to spend with their family. So, in the middle of that year, the business decided that they would no longer provide those services, those backup services to us. We did try to find someone who was able to do that, and we had some difficulty. So, at that time, we also knew that our current animal control officer was going to be retiring, and so, we had reached out to the town of Shrewsbury, which as a good neighbor, was helping us provide some of that backup assistance. When our animal control officer retired, we felt that, just based on the reporting of his activities, that maybe this wasn't a 40-hour-a-week position. And so, at the time, we had asked the board to create a 19-hour-a-week position, that we would fill, and we would see how it went, and make sure that we were meeting the needs. About a year into having a 19-hour-a-week position, we found that it's more of a 25-hour-a-week position. And so, in the fall town meeting, we asked for more money, and we created the 25-hour-a-week animal control position. All, all along, using Shrewsbury, allow, they continue to allow us to, to use them for backup services. During this time, we were also talking to the town of Shrewsbury and the town of Grafton about the possibility of regionalizing our animal control efforts. We had working with CMR PC to develop draft IMAs and job descriptions, and because it was so early into us trying to figure out what Westborough's needs were, we felt like it wasn't the right time for us to, to do that. Fast forward to the, this past winter, we were contacted by the town of Shrewsbury to create a more formal agreement to provide those backup services, because we continue to use the town of Shrewsbury. We also engaged the town of Grafton again, because we knew that they're facing a retirement in their animal control position. And so, we've met a couple times, and we feel that this probably isn't the right time for us to regionalize. It's, we're, you know, we've already had our town meeting, we haven't prepared for that. There's a few other things that the chiefs and the animal control officers working in the towns have raised, that we would need to work out before we were ready to move forward with that. But at this time, what we would like to do, and so, I'm looking for the board's thoughts on this, is for the town of Westborough to increase our animal control officers' hours to 40 hours a week, provide animal control services to the town of Grafton within those additional 15 hours. It's exclusively animal control services. They have an animal inspector, their DPW does the work of, you know, cleaning up road and cow. And then, they also, their town clerk does the follow-up for dog licenses. So, it would just be exclusively answering animal control calls. The town of Grafton would pay us for that service. And then, at the same time, we would develop a formal mutual aid agreement with the town of Shrewsbury, where they would back us up, and we would back them up. And so, in addition to backing each other up during vacations, and, you know, being out sick, we would also provide, we would also develop a rotating schedule, so that the animal control officers in both towns would have weekends where they're not on call. And so, that's where we're at, what we're interested in doing, and we just wanted to know the board's thoughts before we move forward with a more formal agreement.
Okay. We don't need to move anything on this right now, because we have to wait for, for an actual final agreement, draft agreement. Does anyone have any questions, however? Yes?
Okay, great. So, the current workload at 25 hours for this position, I, I'm sorry, it's just not clear, is that, is this individual maxed out at 25 within our own town, and covering for Shrewsbury?
So, yeah, our current employee is maxed out at 25 hours. You know, some, some weeks she has to do a little bit more, other weeks a little bit less, but it's 25 hours. And she, and we don't, don't currently provide backup services.
Oh, we don't? Okay. And so, with the support of Grafton, adding that for the 15 hours to make it 40, how does the compensation workflow work back through the town? I'm just not, I don't understand, does that just, does that come back specifically to that department and get allocated, or does it go into the general fund, sort of like we were talking about with Police Detail?
It, it would, excuse me, it would be a revenue for the general fund, and then it would offset part of the animal control office budget.
Any other questions?
One more, sorry.
Go ahead.
Sorry. So, would the, would Westborough and Shrewsbury then also be providing weekend coverage for Grafton as part of that rotation?
Right. So, so there would be two full-time animal control officers, one employed by Westborough, one employed by Shrewsbury, with, yeah, with continuing to offer Grafton the animal control services on weekends. So, they would, yeah, they would switch off as well, yeah.
Thank you.
So, so are potentially, and that's, I guess, the question, so are Westborough town employee, animal control officer, will cover Grafton as will Shrewsbury's, but Shrewsbury's guy will be paid by them?
Right. So, they would remain an employee with the town of Shrewsbury. Shrewsbury would pay them to be an employee and cover their benefits. We would, our current employee would be an employee in the town of Westborough, and we would cover them. They're already a benefited eligible employee, so that wouldn't change, and we would certainly charge back Grafton for the additional 15 hours, as well as other costs associated with providing them services.
So, Melinda would actually, could be called to work in any of the three towns, but there, but the employee from Shrewsbury would only be asked to help in Westborough?
No, no, they would provide services. The three towns have been working together.
Okay.
You know, our hope is that we would be able to establish a district. We think it would work really well. It works very well with our veteran services. I know Chief Lori comes from a town that had an animal control district, and he's in favor of that as well. So, that would be something that we would hope to bring forward for the FY20 budget, but right now, it's sort of a baby step in that direction, starting to understand how we can best serve the three towns, and how we can work together in, in the first year.
Okay. If you don't mind, I just wanted to ask Melinda, who's our current animal control officer, if she had any comments she wanted to make briefly. Okay.
I'm not, just kind of, it's still in the process.
Great, thank you very much. Just, I wanted to make sure we acknowledge you were here.
More comment, not a question. I think, I think this is great. I think, regionalization where we can, where we have capacity makes sense, working with fellow communities. I think it also, in my view, helps us hire and maintain great employees that we may lose elsewhere, because if they're looking for 40-hour work, and it's available in an adjoining town, and we're offering 25, we may lose really quality employees. So, I trust, I appreciate all the work you're doing. I think continuing our regionalization is something that's, to me, is fiscally responsible to do it that way. I know, and I know we've done in the past, so I'm just, kind of going on record that fully support, I think this is great, and fully support to see this continue going forward to maybe a more permanent, true kind of district, as you talked about. So, thank you.
I agree with that, a retention of good workers at 40 hours. Glad to see it. Okay. And I think Mr. Story has a comment?
I do have a question. I don't want to throw monkeys at you.
Can you come up?
What? I, I, I just have a question about the, the vehicle that the dog officer uses is a vehicle that's been, is a water dropping vehicle, and was rebashed, fixed up in a box room, the back for animals and everything. But it's an older vehicle. Who takes care of the maintenance of that and the wear and tear of that, when that's, you know, if you go on Grafton, or whatever, you know, you know, with a lot of miles, and just being around town? And, that's, that's just a question I have.
Thank you for the question, Kristi.
Sure. So, again, we would charge back Grafton for other costs associated, which would be gas, vehicle wear and tear. Certainly, the town, it would be the town of Westborough's vehicle, and we would continue to maintain it.
Okay, all right. Anything else? We don't have to act on it now?
No, but if I could just say, I, I think that it's not only a fiscally responsible thing to do, but that, I think that the level of services that can be provided will be increased, much like we found with the Veteran Service District, where we used to have just a part-time guy here, 15 to 20 hours a week. We now have two guys that are available for about 40 hours a week in one of the towns on a rotating basis. And so, I think you'll find that we actually have better coverage. The situation we had with Shrewsbury was not going to continue, because they weren't getting paid for it. And so, now we've sort of developed a more long-term solution that provides better coverage for all three towns than what they currently have, because Shrewsbury doesn't have a backup either. So, it provides more formalized structure, better coverage, and I think it is fiscally responsible.
Well, it evolved very nicely. Yes, Chief Lori?
I did have experience with this. I oversupervised Douglas Mendon and, excuse me, Douglas Mendon in Oxbridge, and I can tell you that Oxbridge benefited through this. It was in their benefit. Additional monies were raised for the town, and like I said, we manage it. So, I think this is very forward-thinking, and I look forward to taking on these responsibilities.
Thank you. Okay. We ready to move on?
Yep.
Discussion and vote on Spur House Sales Advisory Committee's scope of work. I think Jim had some concerns about this, so he wanted this on the agenda, so I guess we'll let him start.
Yeah, so, at the last meeting, I had provided, and I apologize, I think the packet had a, the wrong attachments to it, so we handed out a hard copy. But I had read the motion that was made at town meeting on what the Spur House Sale Advisory Committee's role was, and I want to just express that I know there are members of the Municipal Building Committee that feel that there is some light treading on their role being done by this committee. And I think the discussion about how the property is subdivided is really, if you read what their role is, it's outside of the scope of their role. And so, I just want to make sure that the Board of Selectmen has a discussion on what the role of this committee is, and makes it clear to the committee what their role is, and what's within the scope, and what's, what's without, outside of the scope.
Okay. Well, I've been sitting in on those committee meetings, and I, I don't feel that they've done anything outside of their scope. Their, their main role is to make sure that it's a marketable property, and to assist in showing the property for sale, and to advise the Board of Selectmen on the development of a sale process, including the RFP. I know they have brought up issues about... they have brought up issues about improving the property. One was to move the transformer and then worked with other committees to try and see if that's possible. We've discovered recently through your email to us, Jim, that it was, or your manager's report, which you'll speak to, and have sought advice on varying ways to divide parcel B, I think it is, the, the parking space completely from the property. So I think working with other groups, one of, one of those actions culminated in you having Joel Bard and Justin Lundgren discuss an option for separating the property. So I think they're promoting good dialogue across committees. I'm sorry if it's offended anybody, but I, but I don't think that's the main issue. I think their issue is to see what they can do, as much as possible, to make it optimally marketable, which follows the town's vote at two town meetings, and then the support of the Selectmen in developing this committee to take this charge on. So that's how I feel about it, and I'd be glad to hear how anybody else feels about it.
Manager?
So, a couple of comments. So, I, every time I've received a communication from the Spur House Committee, it has made me, I've had to stop, think, reconsider. Each of the issues that they've raised have led to further understanding. I think they have enriched our discussion around the Spur House. And, and the other thing is, let's also acknowledge the fact that we, in a sense, we, this board, certainly I do not have the energy and I do not have the expertise of doing this job that they've taken on. So I'm actually, in a sense, grateful that, that they're doing the work that, that I potentially could not do. And then, that's the, I guess, the logical argument, and then there's the emotional argument. I think, you know, the purpose of this board is to energize and engage our, our community, and we've done that. And, and that we have a group of people that, that are caring, that are showing up, that are putting their minutes together. I think we should encourage them. And which then gets me to a point that I was actually going to bring up in my issues and, and correspondence, but I, but I'll bring it since Jim has brought it up. I think it may be helpful, and I recognize the Municipal Building Committee is appointed by the, you know, by the town manager, but I think it may be helpful to have some additional, or one additional voice that may represent some new ideas. So I was thinking, I was going to bring this up in my issues at correspondence, but since Jim brought it up, I think it may be helpful to have somebody like Chris Noonan on the Municipal Building Committee who could help, you know, sort some of these things out. So I raised that up for the board to consider and would, you know, because one of the points that you had made at the last meeting, Jim, was that the Homaco Pond Committee, you know, was a Board of Selectmen Committee and there, there was no involvement from your side. The Municipal Building Committee is kind of your committee with no involvement from the Board of Selectmen's side. So I'm thinking maybe if we appoint somebody, you know, maybe expand their area of, I grant that these, you know, the people on the committee are, you know, have years of experience, years of knowledge, but, you know, from going to the Spur House Committee, there are some additional information that this committee would benefit from. So I would make that motion or however that's done.
That we can talk about, future agenda items?
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else would like to speak to the, Jim's question of the responsibility or the scope of work of the Spur House?
So, I too have sat in as a listening member only on the Spur House Committee meetings because you represent the board at those meetings. And I'd like to certainly echo everything that Syed said in terms of each of those meetings and subsequent communications and information presented have been more and more revealing and helpful. And so I think everything has been extremely positive coming out of that committee. It's not clear to me, based on what I'm looking at in front of me, how the committee, and I don't know that we have to go down that rabbit hole, but how the committee has potentially stepped outside of its responsibilities. Because to me, the language to assist and advise the Board of Selectmen in the development of the sale process, i.e. RFP, and to assist in showing the property for sale is very broad. I mean, assisting in showing the property for sale is pretty specific, but development of the sale process such as RFP, that to me is, is broad. And I don't think that the committee has overstepped at all, based on my personal involvement.
Well, they can't make decisions for the building committee, and they can't make decisions for the zoning Board of Appeals, and they can't make decisions for the planning board. So it'd be a little hard for them to, and they can't make decisions for us. So I think it'd be a little hard for them to overstep. So I don't know if there's anything more specific you'd like to say about that, Jim?
Well, I think some of the concerns have been if there are increased costs by moving a transformer, where's, where are those costs coming from? When it comes to whether the property is subdivided by eminent domain or through a zoning variance, where does that fall into that scope? Is that part of providing the RFP? I'm just asking.
I don't know where those funds would come from necessarily, but those questions would come to the board. And if the board said, yes, we want to go ahead and take this direction on the advice of the zoning Board of Appeals, because it seems like an easier and therefore perhaps less expensive process, or if it costs money to move the transformer and we think that's in our best interest, the Board of Selectmen is going to have to vote on that and then decide if we have, if it's something we have to go back to town meeting for to raise money, or if there are contingency funds or funds, the Board of Selectmen has some funds of their own that they can expend, we'd have to make those decisions. But we haven't come to that bridge. It was my understanding from the meeting, the public hearing and the meeting with the sites and the facility, the Municipal Building Committee, that it was reported that it wouldn't cause much of a delay, maybe two weeks to change, move the transformer, and that there wouldn't be any additional expense. I think Shelby was there and heard that. I didn't, but Shelby can speak to that.
Yes, thank you. So that's, I, I did sit through the full first part of the Municipal Building Committee, the entire public hearing, where National Grid provided their presentation during which they said that it would be, what I heard was a one-week delay. That may have been expanded in subsequent communications that I was not part of, but it was a one-week delay, my notes show. And it also, the gentleman that was representing National Grid said there would be zero cost from their work. So I know that Mr. Malloy is going to speak to this matter, and I sort of want to jump ahead of the agenda in, in his report, but it's unclear to me where these additional costs are coming from by moving the transformer from what we refer to as Option 1 to 1A, which is the parking spots, which are a handful of feet away. So I don't know if we want to talk about that now for clarification.
Okay.
For clarification, in, under the current plan, we would not be demolishing the current underground structures associated with the transformer. By moving the transformer, we will be just having to remove all of that underground material. And there is a cost associated to the town to that, not to National Grid, but to the town, there is a cost associated with that.
And well, we have yet to find out what that would be, but they would have had to have make it larger anyway, and they would have had to have changed the parking, the parking pad, so to speak, because it wouldn't be sufficient for a larger transformer, was my understanding. So there was going to be some expense to that anyway. And Mr. DuRette might be able to speak to that. But, so it may be a, a different cost. It may cost more to destroy it than to expand it or make it stronger or more viable for a larger transformer. But we don't have that information. And again, I don't think that advising the board that, that this would be a good marketing plan transgresses anything because it costs more. And that's an issue that the board has to decide. It was not a transgression, in my mind, of their responsibility to advise us of good marketing strategy to meet two town meeting requests and the Board of Meeting, the Planning Board, the, the Board of Selectmen's requests, to get this thing on market in a saleable fashion with no strings attached to it. So a person can buy it saying, I know what I've got, and nothing has to be done later on, like eminent domain, by a whole nother town meeting, or, I mean, all these strings. So.
And Manager, the thing is, we don't, we're not bound by any of their recommendations.
Correct.
Right? But I think they're asking some questions that I think that are valid and they, they benefit us. Now, if there are additional costs and that we are not willing to, as a board or as a town, willing to bear, fine, we, we won't bear those costs. But I think at least, and I think Shelby spoke to this, at least, and I'll just speak for myself, I'm being educated. And I think the town benefits from all of us being educated about, you know, I didn't know about transformers and how, where they go, but now I am. And, and, and I think the town will benefit from having this, this knowledge. And we don't necessarily need to agree with what the Spur House Committee says. And if there are costs that are, you know, high and we are not willing to pay, we won't pay them.
Okay. Ian, do you want to say anything?
No, I think.
Okay. Bruce?
Well, I'm just reading this motion again, and it's rather.
A motion?
No, no, I'm reading this, the, the town meeting, the town meeting.
Okay, yeah.
Or, eh, a motion. And the English is very interesting. And, but what I get out of is, it's an advisory committee, so it's to advise us, and we're mentioned many times in this, we're, it's to advise us about the sale of the property, the membership of the committee, and then how they are to report back. Anything else that comes out, like this transformer issue, the subdividing the property, it is up to us to decide on that. So, we'll ta, we'll just take that under advisement, as we should from an advisory committee, and move on.
Okay. Any more discussion on this?
No.
All set. Now, schedule review of, we would like to schedule a review of the Board of Selectmen and the town manager's goals and a review of the retreat. So this was on the agenda, not to have a discussion about those things, but just to say, would we like to schedule, because out of the retreat, I think this came up, that we'd like to get these other items taken care of sooner than later. So do we want to schedule a review of the Board of Selectmen and the town manager's goals and a review of the actual retreat at an open Board of Selectmen's meeting versus going back into another retreat, which cost us, I think, six hundred dollars for Jeff and nine hundred dollars for Joel? So that's the question.
See no reason to go to another retreat, I think? No. I think it's, I think it should be as that was, but put it in a regularly scheduled meeting, I think is fine.
And I, I think we had discussed doing it at the May twenty-second meeting.
I think so, too.
I thought that was a thought, yep.
Yep. But we hadn't voted on it, so just wanted to make sure. So do you think we can do all three of those at that one meeting, and that will be our work, our?
The whole meeting, yes.
Yeah, okay. So, I don't think we actually need a motion to do that. We'll just say that's going to be on our next agenda?
Yep.
Okay. All set. All right. Smithville Parking Town Manager.
So, I don't have a complete plan, but I actually did receive a couple of plans from the engineering department today. We had a meeting last week and we've had a couple of good discussions between the police chief, our DPW director and myself, and our town engineer, related to where the parking would be laid out and how it would be laid out and how many spaces could actually be done on Smithville Parkway. And then I reached out earlier today back to the MBTA to set up another meeting with them, as well as our state reps and our Senator Jamie Eldridge, because they were involved in the original discussion, and seeking to set up a second meeting to talk about how the Pay by, the parking app, Pay by Phone is what it's called, would actually work with those spaces. Because one of the concerns is if they weren't being, if we weren't charging for those spaces, what you'd end up getting is fifty people parking there and fifty empty parking spaces, perhaps in the parking lot. People would want to save four bucks a day. So, and the MBTA had initially indicated to us that we would be able to get parking, the eng, I mean, get the, part of the Pay, Pay by Phone app. The town engineer put together two plans. One has thirty-three parking spaces, one has fifty. And the difference is, see it would be on the east side of the MBTA station, there is no sidewalk adjacent to the curb. It's across the street. And so, there are, it, it's interesting, it's not a hard and fast rule in the design criteria for on-street parking, but it's, it does recommend that if you're having on-street parking, you should have sidewalks adjacent to it, that that's the norm. And so, the least we would get is thirty-three, the most we would get is fifty, if we stretched it out a little bit further. And so, we'll, over the next couple of weeks, hopefully, I'll have a meeting with the MBTA and have a more defined plan that we can present to the board in the next several weeks. I think that if the board wants to, after the meeting, take a look at the plans and see what our engineering department put together. But we're working on it. We're sort of moving in the right direction. Just didn't move as quickly as in two weeks. Most things don't happen in two weeks, so.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So, first of all, thank you for continuing to move it forward and appreciate any progress. So, just as point of clarification, I'm geographically challenged on this one. I thought we were going to put the, the proposed parking would be on the side of the MBTA station where there is a sidewalk.
There, there is going west of the MBTA station, and then there's a crosswalk that crosses over right at the MBTA station that goes to the sidewalk across the street that then goes up to Otis Street.
But the sidewalk doesn't extend to the other side of the entrance to the parking lot?
Yeah, I'm not questioning, I just visual.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's just what it is.
Okay, yes.
So, yeah, thank you for, for putting this together. My, my question is, you know, Mr. DuRette had mentioned that the MB, we pay the MBTA money for rent or whatever. Are we going to get some of that money back?
No, we don't pay them for rent. We pay for having a train service here.
Oh, we pay them for that?
Yeah. We pay the MBTA about forty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars a year. We pay the WRTA, which is the Worcester Regional Transit Authority, seventy-six thousand and seventy-seven dollars per year. It's taken off of our state aid as a, as a charge.
Right. So I'm just saying that potentially, if we build this, can we, I mean, I hope they're going to pay us for doing this? And do we, will we get the money?
Well, we would get the money for the on-street parking.
Okay.
And then if we built the parking lot in the future, we would get the money from the, from the parking lot as well.
They would help us potentially build the parking on the Smithville Parkway?
No, no, all we have to do is stripe it.
They would help us with the billing.
We've got too many people talking. So if, if we could and wanted to build a parking lot on the Hakamaka property, we would have to pay for building it, but then we would get money back from the parking?
Yeah.
But no, even if, but if we park on the street, right, if we, if, that is, that's going to be our money, we're going to have to pay to build that parking on the street.
Yes.
But we will collect, but we will collect the money for that parking, right? It'll be our money.
That's my understanding from our original discussion. That's why I want to have a second meeting to firm things up with the MBTA.
But there's no really building and striping some.
Yeah, it doesn't cost much.
And some signs, just as, you know.
Striping and probably painting numbers.
Right, okay.
So, because this was on the agenda, I just wanted to give you a very brief update on the issue of the Hakamaka limitations of use issue. Andy Konersberg has reached out to the remedial project manager. If you read that, N-A-U-L, you'd recognize what remedial project manager means. His name is Derek Golden at EPA. And Derek would like to review, Derek Golden would like to spend a little more time reviewing the activity and use limitation document and pass on any inform, and pass on any opinion by the local agency attorneys. So that's in progress, and we'll probably have a response from EPA about that prior to our next Board of Selectmen's meeting. And he will also copy to us and Derek Sari any correspondence he gets from EPA. Just wanted to know that that is an ongoing look into whether we can do it or not. Okay. Now we have interdepartmental transfers from the town manager.
We don't actually have any. Our finance director has asked us to keep that on the agenda for every meeting between now and the end of the fiscal year, so that if we need to make interdepartmental transfers, we can.
So what are the, is that for money?
That's, that would be if we needed money in one account. The law allows the board and the finance committee to transfer money from one account to another one during the last part of the fiscal year.
Oh, okay.
So that you don't necessarily have to go to the reserve fund if you have funds in a, another account.
Okay. So then we are up to our manager's report.
Yes. So, there are, the first item is on the delegated items that the Board of Selectmen have delegated to the town manager, and the, the only two were poll hearing and conduit hearing. Poll hearing was at five Otis, for five Otis Street, which is Dana Films, to allow their expansion. They require three-phase power. I approve that. Then there was a conduit hearing for forty-five West Main Street, which is Forbes Municipal Building, which is underground conduit from poll four to the transformer, and I approve that. We moved the transformer, they have to, we have to have another conduit hearing. And then I just gave the board some of the information that, that I had on, in relation to that, and also talked a little bit about the fact that there are fifty-six parking spaces at the Forbes Municipal Building, of which approximately sixteen police vehicles take up. A number of those leaving about forty parking spaces. Moving the transformer will reduce the parking spaces for employees and others to thirty-eight parking spaces. And that, under the town zoning, the size of the building would require a hundred and fifty-eight spaces. So that gives you an idea of where we're at relative to the number of spaces that would otherwise be required. And the town hall should have sixty-one, we have twenty-six. And so, between the two, we should have two-hundred-and-nineteen. And so, when, talk about parking issues, you know, And so, uh, when, talk about, uh, parking issues, you know, there are obviously some parking issues. We are making some headway on the downtown parking study. We do have a plan right now of a study area that Jim Robbins and Carl and Mark Stockman and I have gone through a couple of times, which is the, um, D-Pot area of the downtown area, as well as the downtown business district. And then, um, a number of the municipal buildings, as well as multifamily homes. So that we can actually start pegging some of those. John Steinberg's involved and is helping out to identify where those multifamily homes are, how many units they have, so that we can do how many vehicle estimates, which is one of the things Central Mass Regional Planning will try to calculate is, I mean, the Mary M, that's right across the street here, is a great example, because they have like four parking spaces off the street. The rest, their tenants park on the street, except in the wintertime. They can't park on the street. And so, they will do calculations like that, and that's what Central Mass will do. And they'll come up with a number of how many parking spaces we can, we actually should have in the downtown area. And then we can start having a discussion about how we're going to acquire land to, to do those parking spaces. On the Forbes Municipal Building, Shelby had requested the current OPM budget, historical change order log and associated cost, projected and future change order log and associated cost, parking plans and schematics for future tenants of Forbes. I've attached the monthly report that the municipal building committee receives, as well as a summary of additional costs that will be incurred, which shows that there is really no funding. We're probably around a negative thirty-three thousand, five hundred and eighty, remaining in a fifteen million dollar budget that the town will need to then cut back on the technology budget and the FFNE, which is furnitures, fixtures, and equipment budgets, in order to keep the project balanced. The first page of the attachment is the overall project budget and where the town stands on the contingency. The second page is my estimated overage on the lease cost, and the third page is the parking layout and remainder of the handout that the municipal building committee receives, receives every month. The handout includes reports from both Harry and Jakunski Humes. Harry is the owner's project manager, and Jakunski Humes is the architect. And includes the information related to the change order log and project budget. Also includes the project schedule, and the last two pages are a dashboard of where the project stands on a number of different measures.
Thank you for that.
Thank you very much. I actually did read it, except that project log is a little hard to read and understand, but it was not in color. Yes, no, no, that's okay, thank you. It would be great, I think, for the board to continue to receive these. I know that was also presented at the NBC, so I don't know if that, that's standard.
Yeah, we see it every month.
Okay, right, so if we could continue to receive these on a monthly basis, I think it would just be great to have that information at hand.
Sure.
Thanks.
Thank you. I, I had a question on number one, Jim, before you get to number three. So, you have instructed the architect, OPM, to work with N Grid to present a transformer on the town property, and that will include the costs and the time. So, would we have to, as a board, vote to approve that plan when you get it back to us? Because if it, if it changes the amount of money involved, or would asking them to do this just put that whole process in place?
Really, the municipal building committee under the town charter oversees the construction and reconstruction alteration of building projects. So I think that would fall underneath them, just as any other building committee does, like a school building committee. I think the only way the selectmen would be involved is if we were to move the transformer in such a way that it would require an easement somehow. I think that that's where the Board of Selectmen would get involved. I think putting it back on the town's property doesn't necessarily require an easement. Doesn't mean that we won't bring it to the board. I, I talked to our owner's project manager today, and the afternoon of our meeting last week, he had already reached out to National Grid, and they're already working on it. So, anticipate, we've scheduled a meeting for May twenty-third to get an update on that, if it's ready. If the architect and the OPM are both ready to give us an update on May twen- we usually don't meet twice a month, we meet once a month. But, uh, we felt that we wanted to try and keep this moving along, so we're, we've scheduled a meeting for May twenty-third, if it's appropriate and necessary to have one that day.
So that's the building committee, municipal building committee?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Can I ask a question, though?
Yes.
Just a little confused, Jim, so, um, are we, so this is working on seeing what that would take and what the costs are? Or are we moving forward with moving the transformer at this time?
Well, it's looking at what the costs are, and then the municipal, it was going to go back to the municipal building committee. And if the costs were reasonable, we would go forward with it.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, then you're number three.
And then on number three, the compensation study, Gov. HR provided their draft report to the board at the last meeting, and asked for comments from the board so that they could finalize their report and provide a final report to the town. It stated that it would follow up at this meeting to see whether or not the board had any comments it wished to have included or addressed in the final report. And at the last meeting, Sayed Hashmi had asked if I could convert the table that was included into a chart. Done it difficult to develop a meaningful chart, eventually came up with the attached, which is a sampling of the grade seven positions. I actually believe the table is a better way of reviewing this data, and we recommend the board, at some point, have a discussion on whether the, from a policy perspective, the board wanted to pay at the fifty percentile, which is average, or sixty percentile, which is slightly above average. And I would just note that the calculation that we did when we took together the fire chief's contract was based on the sixty, sixtieth percentile from the compensation study. And I believe Christie had a discussion with, the town of Southborough had a study also done by Gov. HR, and they went with the sixty-fifth percentile. So just so you know, that going with something more than average is not normal, because as you said, you wanna keep good employees. And so, um, you know, my recommendation, already provided to the board, was to go with the sixtieth percentile. And so, hopefully, at the first meeting in June, the board, we can have it on the agenda to have the board take a position on that. Unless there's more information, or if you have comments, or anything that you wanna include it in the final report, I mean, let me know now, and I'll get them to Gov. HR.
Uh, Jim, I thought we were, there was gonna be a discussion, you, you had mentioned that there was gonna be a discussion with the town employees, or did we not discuss something like the, the town employees, like the people affected by this?
Yeah, we did.
Or did we, that were gonna come to the board, or have a comment, or, I believe you made comments?
I had asked at our last meeting how they were gonna get the information, in case they had any concerns about it.
Well, there were two things, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think that one was to share that, but I think also, I thought the board wanted to hear, did we not, Shelby?
I, I believe it was two items. One was, how was the compensation study going to be shared within all the various departments? And then I believe at our retreat, a question came up with some concerns from some town employees with what had been presented at the Board of Selectmen meeting when the study was presented.
So, um, so it's been distributed to all of the non-union town employees, all of them. And Christie and I met with three DPW employees who had concerns, and we discussed their concerns with them. And it will be brought up during our department head meeting tomorrow.
Yes.
To see if any of the department heads have concerns or comments.
That's what I thought. You were gonna have a department head on their agenda. Okay. All right. Okay, we are on, yes?
I just wanted to hand out two things. One is, um, and if Sayed has extras, here, let me keep one. I think there's one for you, too, just for the record. The first handout is just Jakunski Humes' design of where the Transformer would go on the Forbes Municipal Building property.
Yeah, I think he gave that to us in a packet.
Was that in the packet as well? Okay.
The larger print is appreciated.
Yep.
And the second thing is a question that Shelby had asked about on lease details on the ten percent administrative charge, and how much actually was collected on the vehicle charge, which in the last fiscal year, fiscal year seventeen, it was one thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. We've changed it from twenty-five to a hundred, so should make a difference there. And then it also shows for fiscal year fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and then through fiscal year eighteen, how much has been collected on that ten percent charge. And Leah Talbot, our finance director, noted that since the board increased the vehicle amount, she's changed how she's tracking it, and that we'll know what the impact is in the future.
Great, thank you.
And let me see if I had anything else for the board. Oh, so, yeah, actually I do. One of them is actually very important to talk to the board about. The first one is, this morning, we had a, um, a bond rating conference with Standard and Poor's. I believe that it went very, very well, and that we'll see that our, because we're doing a nearly thirty-two million dollar borrowing, that I think we'll believe, I believe that we'll see that our AAA S and P plus bond rating will remain in effect. We've actually not only continued to do as well as we had done the last time we had a, a bond rating meeting with S and P about a year ago, but since then, because we've completed the special legislation process for the capital stabilization fund, and that property sale is moving forward, hopefully rapidly soon, that S and P was very impressed with the fact that we had basically planned out how we would be paying for future capital without impacting the general fund. And so, and, and then we had also updated, if you recall, in, uh, late two thousand seventeen, it was after our last bond rating meeting, we had updated our reserves policy as part of our comprehensive fiscal policies, and increased it from seven to ten percent to ten to fifteen percent, and we're within that. And so that even shows that we have greater financial strength and flexibility. Same time, our, uh, excess levy capacity has remained strong, our revenue collections have remained strong. We actually collected more than we had anticipated last year, a lot of that due to the fire chief's diligence on the ambulance billing, as well as a couple of other things. And our expenses were held within budget throughout, and so we spent less than we had anticipated, and we brought in a little bit more than anticipated. So, overall, they feel that we've maintained a very strong financial management. And so I do expect that it will stay at the highest rating that we can possibly get through S and P. The other thing that has resulted in a lot of phone calls in the last couple of days to a lot of different departments is the residence on Warburton. You may know where that is, you may not. There's, it's a short little street, has three houses, and Monckford's Flower Shop, Flower Shop. It's right across the street from, on Jake, across Jacob Abston, Amston Street from the ice cream store. And I don't think I have to say the name of the ice cream store, I think we have one ice cream store in town.
We have two.
Anyway, oh, there is two, because there's one on...
We have three. We have Nurses, Dairy Queen, and...
Actually, four, because there's one on Route nine.
Five, well, we have a lot of ice cream choices in town.
Yulman's Ice Cream Store, it's across from Yulman's Ice Cream Store. So anyway, last year, the Board of Selectmen, at the request of the residents there, had a discussion, because a lot of Yulman's is very popular, and a lot of summer evenings, they have a number of cars parked on Jacob Amston and on Warburton, and it was creating a problem with residents there. And so, we had the property owner in, Yulman's in, and, uh, they put in a new parking lot in the back, and the board made no parking on Jacob Amston and made Warburton a one-way street. So the problem with that is that we made it one way, not knowingly, but we made it one way going the wrong way. The recommendation at the time was to make it one way going from Jacob Amston to East Main Street. Problem that's created is now all the residents have gotten letters from the post office saying, well, we're not gonna deliver mail there, because we have to drive on the wrong side of the street on a one-way street. And so they have to either move their mailboxes on the other side, it's kind of a wetland, it drops down, so it's kind of a problem. And so, um, I've heard from the residents there. The chief of police has heard from the residents, Christie's heard from the residents. I think Paula's heard from the residents, maybe some of you have. But, uh, the simple fix is to turn it around and make it go the other way, because then, the other problem is that they would have to put their trash cans in the middle of the street when their trash service comes and picks up their trash, because they can't leave it in their driveway, because those now have an arm that lifts them up, and it's on the right side of the machine. So in order to fix it, what we would need to do is just make it come back around the other way and have it stop at Jacob Amston. And I think that actually will end up benefiting anybody using that, because if you go out on Warburton onto East Main Street, you actually don't have a great line of sight. Going the other way, you come to Jacob Amston, and then come to, uh, East Main Street, and you have a better line of sight there. So I think it's actually better. You know, sometimes you live and learn. We did what we were asked to do, and what the police chief, Al Gordon, had recommended. And I think after talking to the residents, the easy fix is to just turn it the other way. But we can't just do that. We have to hold a, um, public hearing on changing the traffic rules and regulations. And so the one thing that I would ask that we put on the agenda for the next meeting is that we just set that public hearing for the first meeting in June, because I just need you to take a vote to do that, to set a public hearing to do that, so that we can advertise it and schedule it, and hopefully take care of it early in June. Because in the interim, I think the residents, they're probably going to have to drive down to the post office to pick up their junk mail. I mean, we don't get anything else in the mail anymore, do we? It's just junk mail now, so they have to go there to get their junk mail.
Well, I hope a lot of mothers get cards as well.
Oh, there are a lot of mothers, yeah. So they'll have to drive down to the post office to get their Mother's Day cards.
So, just for point of clarity, so we would change it, so you would enter through, like, the Monckford's way?
Yes.
Okay, versus, okay, thank you.
And so, if the board understands that, what I'll probably do as well is, um, after the next meeting, I'll send a letter out to the four property owners that are on that street. The individual who's sort of leading the charge has talked to his neighbors. I think Monckford's may have the only one who has a question about it, but I'll reach out to them in the next couple of weeks and see what their concerns might be, and try to address it.
I, I thought that this was a, again, you know, my memory's, I thought this was only going to be like a, this traffic thing was going to be part-time, right?
It's seasonal. It's April through October, though, so it's half the year. It's while, basically while Yulman's is open. Or March, actually, I'm sorry, it's actually March through October. So, uh, so it's more than half the year, it's just not in the wintertime. And so, uh, it's one of those things that I think we can fix easily, more easily than trying to make everything move. I think just making it go the other way is maybe the easier fix.
Okay. Is, is that it, Jim?
And that's it.
Okay. So, now issues and correspondence, you wanna start with you, Bruce?
Sure, happily. I have my notes here. Terrific, well, I gotta memorize. Oh, hang on, hang on, just on the back. Okay. They, they have to do two issues that, that have to do with the biking pedestrian committee. This Sunday, we had a, a walk and talk along the trail, so the Boston and Worcester Airline Trail, and that was along the Westboro section, starting at two thousand West Park Drive. And we had, uh, our state senator, Jamie Eldridge, participate, our police chief, Jeff Laurie, and one of our other tenants, Glenn McLeod, who's also on the biking pedestrian committee, participated. And it was great to see their, to see their showing. Unfortunately, we didn't have anybody from any other elected board participate. And the, the information, the opportunity to see what's going on is really important to a, a number of boards. Our board, the planning board, Economic Development Committee. And, uh, we're going to have, so, um, what we did do is, we, we walked again from, uh, from near four ninety-five to Carmack, so through the Stop and Shop parking lot to, to the back of Carmack. We couldn't go any further, because the owner of the land that continues to the west is not allowing us to walk on his land. And, uh, so that outlined one of the obstacles that we have. We have a few obstacles, but we continue moving forward. And then regarding that same issue, there's gonna be a talk here, right here in this room, on Thursday, May seventeenth, so next Thursday at seven PM. And at that meeting, we're gonna talk about the history of the, the trialing line, and the, and what we're doing now with the trail, the plan, about how the, the trail is going to proceed, and then funding, and also some obstacles. It's open to everybody in the town, and I would strongly urge elected officials in town to come to that meeting, ask questions, and learn what's going on.
It's May seventeenth.
It's May seventeenth, seven PM, right here.
Here. So, would, would you send an invitation out to the department heads, please, and the boards? Or the boards, I guess, to the board chairman? Could Paula do that, or Karen do that? Because they might not hear us here.
Sure.
But if we send a real invitation to them, that might be helpful. I told you I had a handle on Hayden Concert, I had to go to that day. Otherwise, I would've been there.
Yeah, no problem. Anyway, uh, yeah, that'd be great. I could do that, I can also get the names. Yeah, I'd be glad to do them. I'd chair that committee, so I can, I'd be glad to contact them. Yeah, I'd be glad to do them. I'd chair that committee, so I can, I'd be glad to contact them. That's it.
Okay, Shelby.
I have nothing.
Yeah?
Just real quick, I think, as the board knows, with the Harvey Building on Phillips Street, that the town has kind of opened that up for community usage. And I know that at least Boy Scout Troop one hundred is using that. Typically, they do a number of service days during the year and they've taken walk-up property as their service project. But in working with the groups that maintain it, there really wasn't work for us to do on our scheduled week, which was this past weekend. But we did get requested to, if the troop would help out with cleaning up around the Harvey Building, something that had been done for a long time. So, a number of scouts and leaders did raking, trimming, cleanup around that property, which I think is, which is great. I guess the one thing, I'm looking for Jim here, is that they moved a lot of stuff, hauled a lot of the trimmings and waste away. There was just some larger limbs and some other stuff that came down from the storm, they just weren't able to cart out of that. Is that something that we could ask the DPW to go over and just pick up when they, when they get a chance? But I think if folks go by, it is something that, from an outside, at least, I think it approves the property and Jack was very complimentary of the work that was done. So, thank you to the scouts for doing that and then thank you to the DPW for picking up the remaining larger limbs and stuff to go. That's all I had.
Madam Chair, thank you. So first, I want to start by saying it's Nurses Week and I want to thank all those wonderful nurses in our community. We appreciate you taking care of us and of our families. Not many people know that, I think most people see nurses just taking care of them and what they may not realize is even behind the scenes, nurses are your most fiercest patient advocates. So, I just wanted to, you know, say that to the nurses in our community that we're so grateful to have them taking care of us. I'd also like to congratulate Westboro High School Senior Megan Koo for her victory in the Lion State Youth Competition. I was trying to get her in front of this board. I think, you know, we should try to recognize and showcase people who have brought honor and recognition to our community and I hope the board will join me in congratulating her. And I hope that we can send her a letter saying that we're proud of her. I would have written her a letter myself, but I'm told I don't have access to the Board's, Board's stationery. So, I hope that we can send a letter from all of us. I also want to congratulate Kristin Stoyl on her acceptance to Lafayette College. Within days of turning eighteen, Kristin registered to vote. Some of the most searching questions I was asked as a candidate were asked by her. And more impressively, she asked nothing for herself, but was focused on the future of her town. And in spite of her rigorous academic schedule, she found time to win a Girl Scout Gold Award, be part of a state championship volleyball team, and be involved in student government. In fact, she probably has done more in her life than I have done in mine. And she should be sitting here and not me, and one day I hope she will. And I recognize there are many in the community that wonder where and how we spend our tax dollar and who can be questioned, and I think that's appropriate. But the fact that some of our tax dollars have gone to educate and nurture these two exceptional young women should be a source of pride for this community, and it certainly is for me. I hope they will come back and be part of this community because they represent the change that this community needs. And that change, I think, sometimes cannot come soon enough. I asked about our community calendar. I think you were going to ask, check with our lawyers, Jim? Do you know what the status of that is? You know, I was wanting to put, have the community post events, like, you know, the Rotary or the.
Because you might exclude one religious group or some political group, that was the question.
I haven't done that yet.
Okay, so if you could, if you would, when you get a chance.
Who would be posting those?
I was just thinking that, like, you know, like, the library could post on our, on our calendar, like, social events. Like, the school could post their social events on our westboro.org, you know.
So in addition to their calendars, they would be posting on the town calendar?
Just the town calendar, so that, you know, you could, we would drive traffic to our website in our calendar, so that.
Wasn't Christie going to look into that? Because you said there was a new calendar app that was interesting.
Yeah, no, I think that was the Verbio thing that Shelby sent around.
It's commercial, and I wanted actually just to have an ability to post things on our website.
So, so you could go one place.
I thought it was departments, but you're also interested in community groups.
Yeah, community groups.
Rotary, Civic Club, and that was a piece that needed to be researched of inclusion, exclusion, you know, who, whatever.
You didn't want a Nazi group suing us because they couldn't post their thing there.
And the other thing was, I was, you know, you're talking about the parking study, but I'm wondering, did the board consider how the change in school timing for high school would affect parking and traffic in the downtown area? Do you know if that was considered?
Well, we haven't, we haven't even done the study yet. I don't know that that would have much of an impact on parking in the downtown area during the day.
What would be the?
Yeah, I think that, isn't this high school moving their hours down or something? Is that right?
Well, they're swapping. So, they're just swapping schools, as I understand it. So, some schools are going earlier, the high school and middle school are going later.
Okay, so you think that the traffic would be a wash?
I think so. I mean, the timing, I don't know if this.
Even if the traffic is, it's not going to, it shouldn't affect parking, on-street parking.
We're going to hear about scheduling tomorrow night at our meeting.
Okay.
So we'll have a better idea, but it should just swap. Just Mill Pond is the first cycle, then middle school and high school are the next cycle, and the K through threes stay the same.
Okay.
So, it could have an effect on the west side of town because Mill Pond is first, but that would be earlier. So it might actually alleviate, but there, remember, there are always buses coming from the east side of town to Mill Pond. So, it's probably not, it's probably going to be a wash.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. And then I heard that especially for Pets in Westboro was closing and, you know, this was a local store that had a devoted following and we had talked about having our EDC Coordinator reach out to smaller establishments to help them stay in town. Is there like a formal process that you guys have talked about?
Yes.
Okay.
Andy, you want to speak to that, if you want to?
No, if you, I mean.
Give an update?
Yeah.
Okay, so, two items, I think, that are relevant, Sayed, to your question. So, one, that this board created a subcommittee, if you will, including myself and Mr. Johnson, to work with Mr. Malloy and members of the EDC to define the EDC Coordinator, Caitlin O'Brien, her goals for this year, and that would serve as a template going forward. So that committee has met, that subcommittee has met, excuse me, we've had a discussion and at the next EDC meetings, those goals will be presented for discussion, so that's the first piece. And in those goals, based on the discussion, there was a robust discussion and consensus that outreach to businesses of all types is an essential job responsibility, so that's the first piece.
Right, and to maybe, like, give them resources, like, maybe these struggling small businesses, maybe we can connect them.
Yeah, so I think it starts with the conversation and letting the, making sure that those businesses understand that the town is vested, if you will, in their success and staying and if they wish to, you know, grow out of their existing space, that the town is a resource to do that. And, and so, you've got a collaboration through the EDC, which includes not only the members of the EDC who are folks in the business community and volunteer at their time, but also members of the town, like the building commissioner, et cetera, and town planners, come together and say, you know, hey, this spot may be available, et cetera, et cetera. And so then, there's another component, which is just on an ongoing basis at every EDC meeting, Caitlin O'Brien, our EDC Coordinator, is providing updates on her outreach. And so as part of her goals, there's this whole discussion around kind of the data, you know, a consistent use of a database and reporting out on the number of outreaches and et cetera, et cetera. So you'll be hearing more about that when you tune in.
All right, thanks.
Can I just, just a further thing on the, especially for Pets, and my understanding there is that they were bought out by a private equity company and they have launched, they have actually another store in the new Shrewsbury Spags Common. So they're closing the Westboro store. They have a new one in Shrewsbury, was my understanding on that one. So it's, but that was the decision made by their corporate purchaser.
Two more to go and then I'm going to be done. One, I mentioned that I was interested in becoming Westboro CMRC Alternator Rep. I didn't know if I needed to get your permission or if.
The board would have to vote.
Yeah, we have to vote.
Denny Drew Reivers, the last delegate, and Bruce was the alternate.
And if Denny's, I mean, I don't want to take Denny's, but I was wondering if Bruce still wants to be on it and if he doesn't, I'm happy to be the alternate.
I think he said he did, the last time I asked, he wanted to be on it.
Yeah, but you know what, I've got plenty going on, I'm glad to, I'm glad to give that up.
Okay, then, but we have to have that on our next agenda because it's a vote.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we'll put that on our next agenda.
All right, one last thing, one cautionary note. I'm glad spring is here, but a new report from the Centers for Disease Control warns about a surge in tick-borne illnesses, so please take precautions. And I'll just end with, just be safe and be well. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So, I wanted to thank a new volunteer on cable, his name is Francesco, Francisco Arias Benitez. And he's a high school student and he will be regularly on cable now. Kim is helping train him tonight. It's nice to see him here. Evidently, he's been active in other things in town.
Yes.
As a student. I had found something that says, was in chapter, I've got the thing here, it's a state statute, I guess, that if somebody's going to video our meeting, which they're allowed to do, like a newspaper editor, or a newspaper reporter, and I notice sometimes we have one here who's videoing, that they're actually supposed to notify the Chair of the Public Body if they want to do that. So I wondered if we should have a little policy someplace so that, so that they either tell, you know, Paula ahead of time, please let the Chair know, I want to be your recording. It just came, I just happened to see it and I thought, well, we're not following it. And it's not too important, but we probably should. So we don't get into trouble over something. I wanted to thank Deb Schraddick for her long work on the Design Review Board, she's retiring from that. And remind all of us that we have strategic planning meetings on May sixteenth at six thirty, and the twenty-ninth and the thirtieth, we're having interviews. The sixteenth, I think, will be in your office, Jim?
Uh, yes.
Okay. And then, we perhaps haven't decided and we haven't timed the interviews, right?
I thought it was the seventeenth.
Let me, let me check on the date.
Maybe we changed, I think we did change it to the seventeenth. I took this off one of my old notes, so let's make sure we confirm.
I'll send something out and confirm that to everybody.
Yeah, and the time, please, because I have like five hours blocked off in the evening, so hopefully it's all.
And then we're going to have to sign up for interview, for individual interviews between the twenty-ninth and the thirtieth. Okay. And then just to remind everybody, they should be up to date on the ethics test. And then I wanted to update everybody, the Green Technology Group is making great progress on getting our, the issues that we have to, the data that we have to get together to make our application. And the application has to be in, I think it's the end of October. So, we're on a pretty tight timeline, especially for the criteria to make a reduction of twenty percent of our energy consumption. So to do that, we've been using Jim's, the database that Jim has been contributing to, the Energy Insight Database, and getting different departments and Jim to help update that. And Dominique de Tremble, who's from the Central Mass Regional Planning Agency that's helping us under one of the grants we got to already get going on this, had kudos for the town of Westboro, and I think we have to credit Jim for this, for having the Energy Insight Data, some of the best that she's reviewed. And that also, when the auditors went around to all the school buildings, DPW, all the town buildings, they came through during vacation and stuff, they found a lot of things that they think can get us to this criteria that you have to have twenty percent that you can reduce. But that in all and all, comparing to other towns, as our departments have told us as we walk through this progress with them, they've been doing a good job, they've been working on things, they've been very proactive. There's still enough to grab on there to be able to meet the criteria to get into this program so we can get grants. But it isn't like some towns where they look at it and think, boy, you guys are a real mess. We're actually doing a very good job, and I wanted everybody to know that and to thank the School Department, DPW, and Jim and Christie for facilitating those people being able to get access to the buildings because they said it went very smoothly and it was most helpful. So those are my things. And our next on the agenda are our next agenda draft items. And I had one that I didn't want to forget. Sayed had asked before that at some point, we schedule the Board of Trustees to talk about.
Yes, and the investments and the OPEV liability.
So we have to figure out when we might want to do that. And, and I think we talked at our last meeting about having review of our minutes policy and accessibility issues for all the committees and commission boards to the minutes. It's not pressing, and it could go on probably any one of our business meetings. And then I have a couple of other suggestions, but I'd like to hear from other people first. So, Bruce, do you have next agenda items?
No, I'm looking forward to the twenty-second.
Okay, Shelby?
Can I pass for the moment?
Yes. Ian?
Yeah, I had a couple, and I think they're, they're not new ones, but first is from departments scheduling and really when they're ready, police and fire. We've had talks or indications, and Chief Purcell mentioned it again tonight with this grant, but about staffing and just have them, when they're prepared, to come in and discuss that with us as we prepare for town meeting in the fall and next spring.
Do we put that on a second Tuesday of the month?
I think so. Would be my suggestion, it's kind of a work session to work with those two departments on staffing, but when they are prepared to do that. Yep.
If it's okay, rather than just pencil it, as the manager indicated like four weeks ago, if our study is due probably around the first week in June, so if we could just table it till then.
Absolutely.
We won't have to do it twice, so we will.
Yep.
So the second June meeting?
I don't want to commit to a date because I don't have it in my hands, but they're telling us around the first week in June. I think that would probably be most appropriate to wait till we have that in our hands and then get on the agenda.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, I think this is, to put it out there, my mind is just, yeah, whenever you feel you're prepared. So just, again, for, I think, my understanding with this is that we're putting together a list of things that we see and then we'll schedule them out there, but absolutely.
So we could do the police and fire, tentatively, the second June meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
And then if I'm not mistaken, I think there was a discussion with the town assessor about looking at the senior, the kind of tax relief, whatever, and that was something to be prepared and presented at a later meeting. So I just wanted to make sure that was on our list of future topics to discuss.
A second Tuesday?
Again, that would be a, that, to me, would be one of our.
I had suggested that, and so had Sayed, okay.
Yep.
Second Tuesday. Okay, Sayed?
That's it.
So, yeah, so I didn't know if that was, the senior tax thing was going to be related, combined with our retreat of our goals and priorities, or is that, can we still have that discussion?
Well, we need him to tell us what it could be, and we would have to decide what we want as a priority.
I say senior, but it's really about the tax.
Okay, perfect. So, yeah, so Madam Chair, for me, I'm just interested in having those, the Westboro investment and a discussion of the liability. And then, I didn't know if we want to get an update from the Planning Board or from Jim, where we stand with Pulte and whether the board wants to say a comment about affordable senior housing, because, you know, we had changed the requirements, it doesn't need to be twenty percent. So I didn't know if the board wanted to express a position about that or have a discussion internally or wait for the Planning Board. I didn't know how that would.
Maybe we could discuss that under our goals.
Okay.
And then if we say so, then what would the action be if that's one of our goals? Does that make sense?
Okay, okay.
All right. Anything else?
Thank you.
I would like to consider that the board can reconsider the segments policy on use of town council and that we put that on one of our future business agendas. It could go on the same agenda where we're looking at critique of our retreat, because it's really one question. Okay? All righty. Dan, I think we're ready to go into an executive session?
Shelby had asked it before. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. So, there are a couple of items from this meeting.
That's right, I'm sorry, you said defer.
No, that's okay. So, there are a couple of items for this meeting, I don't know if we want to repeat them for the purposes of, so.
Do, do, so we don't forget.
Sorry, my highlighter's run out. So, um, Jim's going to provide an update, or Christie will, excuse me, on time and travel to make sure that that's implemented into the policy of the council and aging, just that that's, we're doing that properly. I think that was the request. The, we're going to get an update, I guess, at some point about the additional cost of moving the transformer for the spur.
We're going to get an update, I guess, at some point about the additional cost of moving the transformer for the spur house.
Right, you said that.
Sayed had asked, at some point, we, as a board, we consider whether or not the Board of Selectmen should appoint an individual to the M B C.
The M B C?
It's, it's part of the town charter, the board doesn't have an appointment to that board.
No, I rel- I realized that, so I, it was sort of like hanging out there as it was, I, I realize it's not part of the ch- tar- town charter, so do we just...
Charter review committee could, you could, if you felt you wanted to do it, you could let the charter review committee know that that's one of your goals in their charter review.
Okay, thank you.
But, but hold on, can we, can we suggest to you that, that there may be individuals that should come on, like the Municipal Building Committee, or?
You can suggest anybody you like.
Oh, you're talking about the Municipal Building Committee.
Yeah.
I actually was looking at something interesting, Jim, now that you're saying that, and I think maybe we want to have a discussion about it. I think in our charter, it says that, that you appoint them with our consent.
Confirmation, yeah.
And, and we didn't really do that when you...
We didn't, no, with Al Gordon, no.
Yeah, nor, nor, I think, with George. And then there's also...
George, George was on before, he, he wasn't a new appointment.
That's right, he just didn't resign, okay, yep. And then also, I don't have it right with me, but when the time comes up, we can talk about it. I can't remember if it's in the charter, but there's criteria, suggested criteria, that you should meet to be appointed to that board. And it was quite specific about architectural, building management, project management, a couple other things that, that, when I looked at it, I thought...
In the charter?
I, I, I don't have it right here in front of me, but I, it's, it's in a description of...
I think, I think, I think you're thinking of a school building committee has very, under the M S B A, has very specific guidelines.
No, it's not that, it's not the school.
It's not in our charter, I can tell you that.
Well, it may not be in the charter, but I did find it, and I was going to bring it up at, at a more appropriate time, where we had sort of planned to talk about it, but I'd be, it's in this pile somewhere, and I'd be glad to share it with you. So I think we have those two issues not to be brought up now, but should be on an agenda for discussion, because we want to follow our rules.
Right, so the, just the, the vote that we had in, on charter review, that we would reconsider adding committee members to the current nine from elected town boards or committees. So that needs to be added. And... Sorry, just making sure we, I just missed one. Oh, we have the Warburton Public Hearing for June fifth, so that's on a planned, but that would be... That's it.
Thank you.
Should we discuss maybe one other thing?
Yes.
Every year around this time, and I, I should, probably should have put it on the agenda, but the board can discuss scheduling of meetings anyway, so typically July and August, we go to one meeting per month to accommodate people's summer schedules when they're out of town. And so we've typically gone to meetings that are in the middle of the month on a Tuesday night, and tried to space them out through July and August. So do you want to choose meetings, since we will be setting public hearings, and it's always good to know, because sometimes we have to do that many weeks in advance when we schedule those? So if we could just pick two summer meeting days in July and August, that would be great.
Jim, just a question on the July one, thought in the past, sometimes we wanted to keep our, I thought we kept our original early schedule one in case we had any closeout items for fiscal year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then we, I think you're right, I think then we, our habit was to move in August to the middle of the originally scheduled two, but I'm not sure.
July tenth, July tenth would be the selectmen's first meeting day that month? And then you'd have August fourteenth and twenty-eighth, so if you are available on the twenty-first, that would be, you know, squeezing it in between the two that you would have otherwise had. So it depends on what people's vacation, I don't know if you want to go home and check with families to see what your vacation plans are, to make sure that you're not committing to something right now? What's that?
Can you email this? Do we have to make a decision?
No.
No, no.
No.
Okay, so you're asking for July tenth would be a regular meeting anyway, right?
Yeah, and then when the August meeting would be.
And then...
Just cancel the second meeting that month.
Yeah.
Actually, that would just, I mean, maybe check with Leah, the finance director, to say, is it necessary? Because the only, the only issue we have there, then we have a big gap between meetings, so if it's not necessary, though I think it is, but if it's not, then we could always move it to a middle one in July and a middle one in August, too.
And, and so the suggestion for August, though, would be to perhaps have something on the fourteenth as the single meeting instead of the seventh and twenty-first, is that...
Yeah.
And the fourteenth would actually be the second Tuesday.
Well, you know, it would be the, it would be the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth.
Oh, sorry.
But you could, if you wanted to keep it so there wasn't as much of a time gap between them, you could leave it on the fourteenth.
Yeah.
Then people are free, so I'll, I'll send a reminder out to everybody via email, and if you could just let us know which day works better for you, that's when we'll schedule the meetings in July and August.
And could you also tell us of the reminders for the other additional meetings, the...
The May ones, the strategic planning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we, I'm sorry, on the C M R C P, I felt like Sayed asked a question, Bruce said, yeah, you can go, but we, don't we have to, we have to take...
That would be the next meeting.
That has to be the next, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, Mr. Johnson?
Yep. I'll move to enter into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, two, and six, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and also to move into executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate.
And on that second one, that I declare that an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body.
Roll call vote.
Okay, roll call vote.
Twitter, yes.
Marshall, yes.
Emery, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Ashmead, yes.
We shall go down to Jim's office. So it was nine o'clock.